Hello, welcome to the July 9th organizational meeting of the Board of Education. I'm Janine Ginauer, I'm the district clerk, and I'm going to begin by swearing in our two new board members, Lauren Berman and Jeremy Arnon, to serve three-year terms ending in 2021. All right, so you want to stand? Okay. Aye.
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 State your names.
Lauren.
Jeremy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Board Trustee.
Of the Office of Board Trustee.
Hastings-on-Hudson Union Free School District.
Hastings-on-Hudson Union Free School District.
Town of Greenberg.
Town of Greenberg.
Westchester, New York.
Westchester, New York.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. You may now, we're going to do the nomination for board president, and you can now vote, since you're sworn in, okay?
So.
All right, so, as the district clerk right now, I'm going to ask for nominations for board president. Do I have any nominations?
Yeah, I would like to nominate Doug Sondheim. Doug and I have served as president and vice president for this past year. We've really served as a team, I would say, and Doug has an incredible breadth of knowledge. He understands how the board works, he has great insights, and he's really been a terrific partner, and I had actually given my offer to continue to serve as president, but then I was given an offer by a group called New York State Allies for Public Education to serve on their steering committee, which I was very excited to take, so I had to withdraw my offer, and sometimes what happens is nobody wants to be president, and Doug immediately stepped up, and we are very, very fortunate to have that kind of board where people are eager to serve, and he's just been a terrific, terrific, I don't even want to call you vice president, partner, real partner, so it is my absolute pleasure to nominate Doug Sondheim as president of our Hastings Board of Ed.
Thank you.
Do we have any other nominations? Okay, can I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. I'm going to swear anyone who's president.
Give me the vote.
Vote, sorry, okay. All in favor? Okay. Aye.
Aye, Doug Sondheim.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of board president.
Of board president.
Hastings-on-Hudson Union Free School District.
Hastings-on-Hudson Union Free School District.
Town of Greenberg.
Town of Greenberg.
Westchester County, New York.
Westchester County, New York.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And that's Janine's choice. Oh, not yet, oh, wait, okay. You're going to now ask for nominations of vice president?
Whoever it is.
Yes, that's what you're going to use, but right now you should ask for nominations for vice president.
Do you have any nominations for vice president of the board?
Okay, with that, I would like to nominate Tim Bear. Tim Bear also stepped up right away to volunteer to be our vice president, and Tim joined our board in a time of need, he served beautifully, and I have to say when it came time to doing a lot of the legwork to try to find our interim superintendent, it really was a team of Doug and Tim, and they worked beautifully together, and I would also describe that as a partnership, and again, I thank you for offering to serve, and it is my pleasure to nominate Tim Bear for vice president.
Second?
Ask for a motion.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, Tim Bear for vice president. Aye, Timothy Daniel Bear, do solemnly swear.
Aye, Timothy Daniel Bear, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Vice President.
Of the Office of Vice President.
Hastings-on-Hudson Union Free School District.
Hastings-on-Hudson Union Free School District.
Town of Greenberg.
Town of Greenberg.
Westchester County, New York.
Westchester County, New York.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And that's Janine's choice. Oh, not yet, oh, wait, okay. You're going to now ask for nominations of vice president?
Whoever it is.
Yes, that's what you're going to use, but right now you should ask for nominations for vice president.
Do you have any nominations for vice president of the board?
Okay, with that, I would like to nominate Tim Bear. Tim Bear also stepped up right away to volunteer to be our vice president, and Tim joined our board in a time of need, he served beautifully, and I have to say when it came time to doing a lot of the legwork to try to find our interim superintendent, it really was a team of Doug and Tim, and they worked beautifully together, and I would also describe that as a partnership, and again, I thank you for offering to serve, and it is my pleasure to nominate Tim Bear for vice president.
Second?
Ask for a motion.
Do I have a motion?
Who? So moved?
Second?
Second.
All in favor, Tim Bear for vice president. Aye, Timothy Daniel Bear, do solemnly swear.
Aye, Timothy Daniel Bear, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Vice President.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Vice President.
In the Hastings-on-Hudson Union Free School District.
Hastings-on-Hudson Union Free School District.
Of the Town of Greenberg, Westchester County, New York.
Of the Town of Greenberg, Westchester County, New York.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janine.
Okay, so, the rest of the agenda, which has nine through 43, we're going to take as a consent agenda, which is essentially an ability to vote on all of these at once. Before we do that, does anyone have any questions about any of these items?
No.
No, okay. So you have a motion to take items nine through 43 as a consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of nine through 43 as a consent agenda, vote yes? Great, okay.
So now you'll say that concludes this meeting?
So that concludes the organization meeting, and this opens the regular meeting. Okay. So, what we want to do, usually we start off with some public comment, but before we get to public comment, because I think one of the business items is going to be germane to a lot of what I think a fair amount of the audience here wants to possibly share public comment on, is the Schedule B appointments. So, we're going to move to that first, I want to do one thing before that, but we're going to walk through the Schedule B appointments, which are, I think, some of the things that many of you are concerned about regarding coaches, and so we'll move to that. Before we get there, I want to just go through a few announcements. These are often done by a superintendent, unfortunately he's not here right now, so I'm going to do them, and it is an announcement about something that's become a recurring point of pride in the district, which is the academic challenge team. So, Hastings, I'm just going to read it, Hastings High School was officially crowned the small school champion at the 2018 National Academic Championship from among the schools competing at the four NAC venues, Chicago, New Orleans, Orlando, and DC. A small school is defined as any school with 500 or fewer students in grades 10 to 12 and a non-selective admissions policy. The Hastings High School Academic Challenge Team has now won this prestigious award for the fifth time, 2010, 2011, 2012, 2017, and 2018. Congratulations to 18 members, Jacob Amaral, Joel Gardner, Caitlin Penner, Noah Prizeman, Sam Rabbinowitz, and Nate Smith. So they've visited us quite a few times here with a lot of awards, so, great group of people. Okay, so now we're going to move on to business item, what number was that? Where was the business item?
It's under the appointments, it's actually under appointments, Doug, you're talking about the Schedule B?
Yeah. Yeah, well, let me, I'll kick it off at a high level, then pass it over to you, Maureen, okay? So, I think, so we've heard from a lot of people recently, over the last week, regarding specifically Schedule B appointments, or many appointments made for stipend positions, positions that aren't full-time hires, but for co-curricular, academic, athletic positions. In current process we went through, there was suggestion to right now not fill two of those positions, which I think is what many people, at least, especially these four, I can tell in the front row right here, are concerned about, which were assistant basketball coaches. And what we just had a finance committee meeting, and we had a discussion, and the net result of that is those positions will be filled, and so, it's a broader conversation that we're voting on now, but there's some process points behind that, about how we go about teeing up a lot of different positions across a lot of different categories, and voting on those, and I think one of the things we realized over this past year was that process could be changed a little bit to be more inclusive of the public, which this year, for a variety of reasons, wasn't, and so, we apologize for that, but we're committed to doing that going forward. But that's kind of the high level, just wanted to give you the big takeaway, the headline, which is those positions will be filled as assistant coaches next year, and with that, I'm going to pass it over to Maureen.
And just to highlight, they were included in our original budget, like, there was not a recommendation at the time of our creation of our budget to cut these positions, it was part of it, as we spoke about in the finance committee, was there was a Schedule B renegotiation that happens when we renegotiate our contract, as well as every June with the teachers' union, and part of the rationale for cutting back some of the other positions was to stay within our budget, there were some additional coaching positions that were identified as needed to be added next year that were not part of our original budget, and what we were attempting to do as an administrative team was just to stay within the budget that the community had voted upon. Sometimes we were trying to start the year off and just try to stay within our means, we never told any of the administration where these cuts had to come from, and these were things, although, many meetings, they were not done lightly, they felt was, if they had to make the cuts, this is where they had identified them to be at, but I think, as we reflected on the process after, and the timing of needing to make that recommendation, we realized that people, like the board themselves, didn't really have an opportunity to weigh on it publicly and decide whether they felt it was in their best interest to either take funds from another portion of the budget to make, to cover these positions, so, I think we pumped the brakes, we had some additional conversations internally, and realized that people didn't have an ample opportunity to discuss or weigh in on what we had, you know, proposed, so that we're making the recommendation to transfer money from other parts of the budget to cover any overages we may have in the Schedule B for this year, but have to continue the conversation overall next year, not only with sports, with all of our spending, just to do a better job, and to your point, the recommendation also will be to start the negotiation with the unions earlier, so that we can incorporate any additions or changes within the budget, so that we don't have to, you make these cuts in over the summer, which does not sit well with anyone. So that's where we are. So the recommendation you'll have on the next board agenda will be to transfer, you'll have to transfer out of another part of the budget, $10,000 to cover, or $10,000 or so, depending on the individuals, to cover the additional stipends needed.
Does, do any other board members want to share any thoughts on the topic?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just as I shared at the committee meeting before, I think this is the right decision, I'm really happy for all the reflection, Maureen, I, we all appreciate all of your work, and if these, you know, if this is to be considered in the future, it obviously should involve the community, and I think that's where we've landed, so I just really wanted to thank everybody for their thoughtful input on this.
And to thank those of you who reached out.
Yeah, I'll underline the exact same thing, I mean, I think this is, you know, this is an administration-led issue, I think that's really important for everybody gathered to understand, you know, we appreciate all of the comments, you know, ultimately democracy works because people see an issue and they respond on it, so we appreciate all the comments, but this is really the, you know, the act of funding those positions, and, you know, refining, you know, how we're funding Schedule B this year, has really come from the administration, from the people that are running the building, so thank you to Maureen for, you know, you make it somewhat easy for us, you know, at least in the heat of the moment, by looking at it and saying, we can do this differently, so thank you for doing that. You know, and then, as I said, also in the finance committee, you know, for those assembled, you know, you're, you know, obviously we have a vested interest as a community in this specific issue, but the Schedule Bs affect your kids across so many different things beyond just, you know, basketball, and bringing this whole issue forward earlier in the calendar year into enable discussion so that it's passed with the regular budget, and so that, you know, parents and teachers and administrators know, you know, sort of with as much visibility as they can get, what's going to be available within Schedule B stipends, you know, earlier, that's something that, right, you've already said, we need to work towards that, you know, we, on the board side, we totally agree with you, and we'll make that a big, you know, push for, you know, what we accomplished this year in the finance committee.
And I know it always, these, all the dollar amounts do seem small, and just so you know, with our process, we just try to stay within each department's budget, and but we do have to, like I said, because these are things that affect children directly, and just be mindful of that, and how we communicate if there's going to be a proposal next year, we're going to move those back into the budget, you know, earlier in the budget discussion, but there are, as you know, as we've been discussing over the summer, there's so many moving pieces, we just had to hire another kindergarten teacher, another kindergarten aide, we're going to break another ICT classroom at Hillside, so there's a lot of things that although $10,000, I mean, there's multiple $10,000 things running around, and I think there is a point that occasionally superintendent and administration will put forward something that seems minor, but there were another $40,000 or so worth of cuts on the other side, on non-athletic things that I had mentioned earlier, that were also, I've asked the principals today, had a discussion with a few of them, that we need to look at, and then bring a recommendation to you in August for those positions, because if we're going to add those other positions, I don't think that that, we're going to have to find savings elsewhere.
Maureen, I also just want to thank you, because I think you put a lot of time and effort into this, and I think often from the outside, it can look either simple or quick, and I know that wasn't the case, although I think in the context of all the other negotiating we were doing with three contracts, trying to get things done, trying to take care of things before Tony was leaving, which were important, as you said, this kind of fell a little bit to the wayside, and then it happened, and we had to do it, and I think that we look forward to working with you in this coming year, as I said in the finance committee, that we can take a step back and look across the board, review all of Schedule B kinds of co-curricular, athletic, every piece of that, and even though it's not a decision that the board makes of what's going to be cut, per se, and that does come from the people in each area that's responsible for it, I think it would be helpful for us to have a really clear view of that, and to look at it, and take a careful look, and not have it be in, you know, next May or June, when we're feeling pressed to do a lot of things, as I said to you, I think it's something that the finance committee can take on early on in the year, before we get going with budget stuff and all the other kinds of things, I think we could spend some time on that, so, thank you, and I thank everybody for, who showed up for this today, clearly, we all know that people speak up in this community when it's something that's close to their heart, you know.
I think, like, so we're just going to have to have a lot of conversation, because we did start the conversation a little bit this year in finance, just about addressing just our entire, all of our, all of our spending, so, it'll be to be continued, and we'll make sure, just in the process, again, I think there was with our last board meeting, and this was kind of in between our last board meeting and this board meeting, and there was even a reluctance to, it was based upon what we know as of today, and it was based upon the idea that they needed two additional coaches that they didn't initially have planned for, and just trying to stay within their budget, and that's really all it was, and as you know, when people, at each building level, they have a budget, they develop it, if they need to modify the budget, they do have to have it modified by the Board of Education, and occasionally to stay within those parameters, they make decisions, but I think that we can understand that that, something of this, you know, nature, it's a lot of people felt, had they had known that, and had we had known the information earlier, they may have felt differently about our budget, and we don't want to feel that we're trying to slip it in.
As Lisa said before, at the end of finance, I think it's important that we just be very clear that there will be assistant coaches for girls and boys varsity basketball this year, that is a given, so.
Just in case anyone in the audience is reading that document closely, Maureen, it's not in the document yet, right?
It is not.
The Schedule B document?
It is not.
So if you read that, the coaches are not in there yet, but you will be adding those within the next?
Yes, because I needed the board to agree, as part of the finance committee, that you would authorize the transfer, and I wanted to give you the information, because we're starting off the year, and typically, you know, we want to make sure that we kind of, you know what the financial status is as of today, and where we stand.
So do we need to vote to authorize?
We're going to put it on the August, so, this is, I think, I don't know if we could do a vote, but I think we're not, I mean, we're not going to not do it, right? We're going to?
Well, we can vote on the current Schedule B this year.
Yeah, and then to say we're adding.
There's an intention here to add those coaches, right?
Yep.
And we'll vote on that formally on August 27th, but you can start that process now.
Yep.
Right, okay.
We'll fill them.
So, does it make sense to just vote on the Schedule B now, then, Maureen?
Sure.
Is there anything else that has to be discussed on there?
Um, I don't believe so, I think, like, I had mentioned that the other conversations we had around things that we're either adding, which have not been finalized, because of the ongoing conversations, they have not been finalized with the union, although we know some of the dollar amounts, we will be making that recommendation at the August meeting, so there may be some additional or other, you know, but we'll come, we'll have an opportunity to discuss it before we make those recommendations.
So, can I have a motion to approve the Schedule B appointments as listed in item 4E?
So moved.
A second?
Go ahead.
All in favor? Okay, great. So, my first meeting here as president, I'll be jumping all over the agenda, and want to move, we have a distinguished guest in the audience, which is our incoming superintendent. What we want to do is approve your contract right now, Charlie, so we do everything in the right order, and then administer an oath, and then give you an opportunity to talk while you've got probably the most populated organization meeting we'll ever have.
I have to tell you, I'm really impressed. A little bit scared, too.
I hope you like sports.
So, why don't we move to business items, so, I think is, I think we can probably take all 10 of them together, so this is under 3B business items. Does anyone have any questions, anything they want to pull out of that as a consent agenda?
Are seven and 10 the exact same thing?
Agreement, interesting clues.
Hey, Tim. Tim?
Yes.
Can I have my attachments?
They're identical.
Are they identical?
The attachments are identical.
Yeah, so I would just say either, you know, strike seven and keep 10.
Seven and 10.
I think initially we just had it on a seven, and then she got the full language from the attorney.
Okay, so this is number 10 here, that's the actual text of the agreement, is that what it is?
It's the actual resolution that the attorney created for this appointment.
Okay. So, I'd say let's take, do you want to take all 10 of them, or?
No, let's take separately.
Let's do Charlie separately.
Well, no, we're going to administer the oath separately, but this is just taking, this is just approving his contract.
So, 1 through 9, strike 10.
So, yeah, so items 1 through 9, strike 10 as it's identical to 7?
No, we want to strike 7, we want the verbiage of the resolution from number 10.
And not the agreement?
And I just wanted to mention, the verbiage in the agreement does not match the contract language, as I'm looking, it wasn't, it terms on June 30th, but doesn't his agreement actually term July of the following year? Am I looking at this wrong?
July 30th.
July 30th.
It says July 16 here, and I know the contract says July 16.
But it's ending June 30.
July 30, yes.
It says June, right?
The contract says July.
Right, so, I don't know.
So let's change that to July here.
It is July, though, right? Is that the agreement?
It is July 30.
Okay.
Okay, so July, and number 10, we're changing that to July 30, 2019 is the end date. So items 1 through 10, do I have a motion as a consent agenda to pass this? Do I have a second?
Second, go ahead, go ahead, Jeremy.
Second. Okay, all in favor? Great.
I just wanted to highlight that we are going to be moving our garbage service back to the village, and we appreciate their partnership, and they're, you know, it's, we're happy that we could partner again on this.
And I will say thank you, because that's, I think that's wonderful to go back to work on that, and that will help our taxpayers.
Yes, that'll help our taxpayers on the village end as well, so thank you for making that happen.
And that was something we just were able to finalize this week, so.
That's great, thank you, thank you to the village, to the trustees, to the mayor.
Okay, now we're going to move to 3C, the oath of office for interim superintendent, and Charles Wilson and Maureen, uh, Janine do that?
I haven't rehearsed this, I should have brought my glasses.
I, Charles T. Wilson. Repeat after me.
Okay, I, Charles T. Wilson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Superintendent of Schools.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties of the Superintendent of Schools.
Hastings-on-Hudson Union Free School District.
Hastings-on-Hudson Union Free School.
Town of Greenberg.
Town of Greenberg.
Westchester, New York.
Westchester, New York.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Okay, congratulations.
I just want to introduce Dr. Wilson for a second, and just let you know about the process, some of you may have been at our meeting in June 12, community meeting, we talked about taking the process quickly, we did, we also talked about what's the best strategy, and we decided, let's just lay out all the things that we need help with, and if you look for interims, there's a lot of interims who are really interested in what you might call babysitting, the coming and babysitting of the district, and we were decidedly interested in someone who would not do that, and so, we laid out a very long list of things that we'd like to help be prioritized and work with, and we were curious who would be scared off and who'd be willing to engage, and as we read through the list, Dr. Wilson looked up and said, this is great, I love doing this stuff, and so, that was the first indicator that I think we had a great interim, and the subsequent interview went very well, and that's why he's here now, so, I'll pass it over to you to say your work.
Thanks, thanks very much.
I think they'll get you on camera better on the podium.
Sure. Chair or the podium, whatever.
The podium, whatever. Go get this straight. It's great to see, many a side, it's great to see so many people here, and so many students as well, because this is a form of democracy, and you're learning how to, you know, change things, be advocates for good cause and so forth, so it's all good stuff. I've worked for four different school districts, most of my time was in Pelham, New York, for 30 years there, and most of my time has been as a superintendent, although I was a high school principal for eight years in Tannahaw Fly, New Jersey. You know, this school district has a great reputation, we always have a tremendous amount of respect, I know, for the Hastings schools in Pelham, and I do remember, back in the day, Pelham had the best basketball team that it ever had in years, won the league title that year.
Okay. So, I'd say let's take, do you want to take all 10 of them, or?
No, let's take separately.
Let's do Charlie separately.
Well, no, we're gonna, we're gonna administer the oath separately, but, but this is just taking, this is just approving his contract.
So, 1 through 9, strike 10.
So, yeah, so Items 1 through 9, strike 10 as it's identical to 7?
No, we want to strike 7. We want the verbiage of the resolution from number 10.
And not the agreement?
And I just wanted to mention, the verbiage in the agreement does not match the contract language, as I'm looking. It wasn't, the, it, it terms on June 30th, but doesn't his agreement actually term July of the following year? Am I looking at this one?
July 30th.
July 30th.
It's in the contract.
July, it says July 16 here, and I know the contract says July 16.
But it, and ending June 30.
July 30th, yes.
It says June, right?
The contract says July.
Right, so, I don't know-
So, let's change that to July here.
It is July, though, right?
Yeah.
Is that the agreement?
It is July 30.
Okay.
Okay, so July, and number 10, we're changing that to July 30, 2019, is the end date. So, Items 1 through 10, do I have a motion as a consent agenda to pass this? Do I have a second?
Second. Go ahead, go ahead, Jeremy.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
I just wanted to highlight that we are going to be moving our garbage service back to the Village, and we appreciate their partnership, and, and their, you know, it's, we're happy that we could partner again on this.
And I will say thank you, because that's, I think that's wonderful to go back to work on that, and that will help our taxpayers.
Yes, that'll help our taxpayers on the Village end as well, so thank you for making that happen.
And that was something we just were able to finalize this week, so.
That's great. Thank you, thank you to the Village, to the trustees, to the Mayor.
Okay, now we're gonna move to 3C, the oath of office for interim Superintendent, and Charles Wilson and Maureen. Uh, do you need me to do that?
I haven't rehearsed this, I should have brought my glasses.
I, Charles T. Wilson. Repeat after me.
Okay, I, Charles T. Wilson.
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Superintendent of Schools-
And that I will faithfully-
Discharge the duties-
Discharge the duties of the Superintendent of Schools.
Hastings-on-Hudson Indian Free School District-
Hastings-on-Hudson Indian Free School.
Town of Greenburg-
Town of Greenburg.
Westchester, New York-
Westchester, New York.
According to the best in my ability.
According to the best in my ability.
Okay, congratulations.
I just want to introduce Dr. Wilson for a second, and just let you know about the process. Some of you may have been at our meeting in June 12, Community Meeting, we talked about taking the process quickly, we did. We also talked about what's the best strategy, and we decided, let's just lay out all the things that we need help with. And if you look for interims, there's a lot of interims who are really interested in what you might call babysitting, the coming and babysitting of the district, and we were decidedly interested in someone who would not do that. And so, we laid out a very long list of things that we'd like to help be prioritized and work with, and we were curious who would be scared off and who'd be willing to engage. And, as we read through the list, Dr. Wilson looked up and said, "This is great, I love doing this stuff." And so, that was the first indicator that I think we had a great interim, and the subsequent interview went very well, and that's why he's here now. So, I'll pass it over to you to say a few words.
Thanks, thanks very much.
Do you want to sit up?
I think they'll, they'll get you on camera better on the podium.
Sure. Chair, or the podium?
The podium, whatever.
We'll get this straight.
It's great to see, many aside, it's great to see so many people here, and so many students as well, because this is a form of democracy, and you're learning how to, you know, change things, be advocates for good, good cause and so forth. So, it's, it's all good stuff. I've worked for four different school districts. Most of my time was in Pelham, New York, for 30 years there, and most of my time has been as a Superintendent, although I was a high school principal for eight years in Tannenfly, New Jersey. You know, this school district has a great reputation. We always have a tremendous amount of respect, I know, for the Hastings schools in Pelham. And I, I do remember, back in the day, Pelham had the best basketball team that it ever had in years, won the league title that year, and just been awesome. And of course, they made it, they advanced right to White Plains in the quarterfinals of the championship, and they lost at the buzzer. And the name of the school that beat them was Hastings. So, now I don't feel so bad that I'm working for Hastings. But, anyway, I really do feel that it's an honor to be here for this year, and I'm gonna really do my best, and I was very impressed, I am very impressed by your Board and the attitude of the larger community. I think that you are an excellent school district. You mentioned some of your achievements and of your clubs and activities, and I always note the high student performance in this school district is very impressive, and indeed, a lot to be proud of. But what impresses me even more than that is in speaking with the Board, I know that they have an attitude that they, they want to make what is a good school system, a very good school system, even better. They want, they want to make you a great school system. And along that line, another thing that drew me here is that they intend to conduct, it's a little bit of a commercial, pardon me, but they are going to undertake a needs assessment this fall, and in fact, you can look out for it, because you'll all be getting invitations, all the stakeholders, all the different groups in the community, students, parents, faculty, all members are going to be invited to these various sessions and town hall meetings and so forth, to talk about the school system, what is doing well, maybe what it can improve in, what are the priorities for the future, and so on and so forth. And then from that, we will actually inform a strategic plan of improvement for the years to come. So, I've done a lot of these plans, and it's great, I think, that the schools that have done this, it's been very profitable for them, and I think that's something that, let's say, pardon me for giving that a plug, but if you're hearing more about that, and I very much look forward to that, and very much look forward to working in and with the community, at a Board that wants the best for their, their kids. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Charles.
Thank you, Charles.
Okay, so with that, we're gonna open up to, for our first public comment. There's a lot of people here, so we're going to ask you to keep your comments to three minutes. What we ask you to do is state your name and that you're a resident of Hastings. And as always, as always, the, the rule, please know personal information about students or, you know, individuals in the district, but keep the comments broader and more general. So, with that, I'll open it up. Are there any public comments?
Hi, good evening. My name's Mia Johnson. I'm a resident of Hastings. Welcome to our new Board members, and to Dr. Wilson. Look forward to getting to know you and work with you. I have a couple points. The first point I'd like to make is regarding Dr. Lauren Katzman's return to the district. I made this comment at the prior Board of Ed meeting, but I feel it's important, and it's nice having such a large room. So, Dr. Katzman is the consultant who was hired by the district to come in, review the special education programs in the district. She created the very large report that was rolled out a year ago, June, and recommendations were set forth, and the Board approved those recommendations. Dr. Katzman now is coming back to the district, again, to, to review the district's compliance with the implementation of the Board-approved recommendations, and her findings are gonna be presented at a Board of Ed meeting in the fall. So, this should all be happening, presumably over the summer. I'm asking that the district be transparent with the community regarding the process and timing of Dr. Katzman's return, and that meaningful opportunity be given to provide feedback to her. And then I'm giving a very quick shout-out to Brittany Scultecky, who's getting appointed today as FMS teacher, and I'm so proud of you, and I just wanted to publicly, because I think they might not say your name later, but yay, Brittany!
Is there any other public comment? There isn't an opportunity for public comment, second public comment at the end of the meeting, if.
Hello, good evening, Board. My name is Peter Constantine, live in Hastings with my wife and three children. First of all, I want to thank, I guess, past President now, Litvin. I did send an email to the Board, and she did respond, so I want to thank you for that response. The concern that I had, which I know was discussed, I guess, earlier in the Finance Committee meeting, and now with the Board meeting, had to do with Schedule B and the assistant coach positions. I understand now, from what the Board is saying, that those positions, I guess, are not going to be touched for this year, and I guess, first of all, I want to say thank you for that. And I think a lot of us here are gonna say thank you for that as well. However, the concern that we have is going forward, because it seems that the conversation was that, for right now, it's not gonna be touched, but going forward, we don't know what's gonna happen. So, that's something that's a concern. You know, we just want to make sure that these positions are kept and are filled. As I mentioned in my email to the Board, I coach Little League, I also coach through St. Matt's U.I.O. Basketball, and I, I think all of us could agree of the importance of having coaches help our, our student athletes. And the last thing that you want to see is a situation where it becomes basketball this year, next year it's another sport, and the year after that, it's another sport, and then pretty soon, we get to the point that we don't have any sports, because there are no coaches. So, I think that's another concern that we have, is that it may just start with, with a couple assistant basketball coach positions, but it might snowball year after year. So, I think that's something we have to keep in mind for years ahead. Again, we all know the importance student athletes play and, and athletics play in a student's life. And having the assistant coaches there is really a big help. The, you know, coincidentally enough, the main reason I was able to come to this meeting tonight, because I coach for Hastings Little League, my son's summer ball nine-year team, was because I had other coaches there to fill in. So, without that, I wouldn't have been able to be here tonight because of other commitments. So, we have to think of that as well, when we have coaches and assistant coaches coaching, is there are other things that do happen, and, and we do need that help and assistance in order for these programs to, to strive and move forward. So, first of all, I just want to say thank you again for, I don't want to say restoring those positions, but keeping those positions this year, and for next year. I, I think another thing that would touch on that is important is the issue of transparency and how this process is going to work. And, and I guess, when the public becomes aware of when these changes might end up happening. And I know the Board said, and I'm gonna take that, take all of you at your word, that this is something that's gonna be much more transparent in the years to come, if this ever becomes an issue again. Hopefully, it will not, but if it does, we would just like that opportunity. So, thank you.
Okay, so, we'll, if, there will be an opportunity for public comment later, doesn't look like, maybe everyone's just stuck to their chairs, I'm not sure.
You know, if you came specifically for-
Move on.
So, yeah, Tim has reminded me to offer graciously, for those who perhaps came only for the Schedule B conversation, given the fact that that's over, if we want to take a two-minute break right now and offer the opportunity for anyone to leave, we can, we can do that, if you want to take advantage of that. Why don't we do that? So, we'll, two minutes, 8:17, we'll get going. Okay, we're gonna keep moving with Item 3A, which are placement and/or services for CSE. Does anybody have any questions or comments about this?
No.
Can I have a motion to approve the placements in 3A?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay. 3B, I think we've, that's just a redo of the same one, right?
We did that one.
We did that one. Okay, did 3C?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, 4A appointments, okay. 4A appointments, so we have nine appointments under 4A. Does anybody have any questions about those appointments?
I think we may have some people who are being appointed here today.
They're here today.
We have Brittany, is that right?
Okay.
Is that what I heard?
Okay. So, we have Brittany, is anyone else here?
Maybe not.
Okay, okay.
They will all be asked to come-
Yeah, they'll all come back.
They will all be asked to come, Brittany, they'll be asked to come back again in August. So, when all of the appointments are complete, we'll ask everybody to come for the August, I believe it's 27th Board meeting, for a full, sort of, proper welcome. So, we'll see, we'll see you again in a month.
Doug, there's a modification that needs to happen, I, I just noticed it now.
What is that?
On, on, under appointments on Number 4, Chadiya Madera, it's actually, she's being appointed to a 1.0 leave replacement position in English Language Arts.
Okay.
Thank you, Maureen. Problem. I should have, I guess I should have looked at, you know, there was a lot of back and forth, so I think it may be the personal assistant didn't get, didn't get the right information on that, but it is a leave replacement for this year, and it's tied to the reduction in force under C.
Okay, so, with the change on Number 4 to 1.0 leave replacement, do I have a motion to approve 1 through 9 appointments?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Congratulations, Brittany. Okay, B, leave of absence, and we have two leave of absences here. Does anyone have any comments about that?
I'm just gonna make one more comment. We'll modify for the minutes, the end date of their probationary period should be listed on here as well, and it's not consistent across all the appointments. I know some of them got on very last minute, so, each of them, but it'll be reflected in the minutes, there's no reason for you to have to revote on these, we'll just, all of the non-tenured people will have to serve a four-year probationary period.
Okay. Okay, with that change that Maureen just shared about the four-year probationary period, do I have a motion to approve 1 and 2 under 4B?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? 4C, reduction in force. Okay, so that's attached to the Chadiya Madera.
Yep.
Okay. Anyone have any questions about 4C? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve 4C?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? And 4D is amendments. Anybody have any questions about amendments in 4D? Okay. No? Do I have a motion, do I have a motion to approve 1 through 12 under 4D?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Sorry.
Jeremy hasn't gotten one clean second yet.
I'll slow down, Charlie.
It's kind of like-
So, approval of minutes, 5A. Does anybody have any additions or questions about the minutes from June 19?
Good.
No? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from June 19?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Great, all in favor? Okay. And, so, on to committee reports. Finance Committee report, outside of Schedule B, did you want to say anything, Maureen, about any of the charitable gift stuff?
No, I mean, I think we just touched on it, that, that's to be continued conversation, we're waiting to get-
We were in the, we were in the Finance Committee meeting then when we did it.
Oh, okay. So, yeah, that's just related to, to the ability for the district to establish a charitable fund, to allow for, for residents in lieu of paying their property taxes in Town of Greenburg, to make a charitable contribution to the district. The Town of Greenburg has put into law that they would accept that, but the IRS still has not ruled upon if, if it will be legally allowed, so, most school districts are, are holding off to make that recommendation to the Boards of Education until we have that clarification. So, it was just an update, because I know there's been a lot, the Town of Greenburg has really done a good job in running a lot of meetings and staying on top of it, so they're enabling us, if it in fact is legal, to be able to do that.
Can you touch on for a second, because I think you touched on this before in a previous Finance meeting, the administrative, for lack of a better word, burden, the way it's currently envisioned?
So, so because the, currently our taxes are collected by the Town of Greenburg, and it's a centralized service, and they're, they do their own, they're, they are a tax collector. So, we don't currently have to collect our taxes from individual taxpayers and issue what, what they would need to file this as a deduction. So, part of the concern a lot of school districts were having is this is not something we're already set up to do. So, I think, if in fact, we felt there would be a, a large benefit to our taxpayers, and in fact, like, it would be legal, then we would address and make a recommendation at that time, whether it be that we would try to do something with our Quad Village neighbors, or, you know, we've already had some preliminary discussions about that. I think there's a concern, I think if, if it makes sense and we can do it, we'll figure that out, but there may be a cost in doing so, that we would have to share with our colleagues in the River towns in order to-
The administrative burden, or ultimately of the district-
Yeah, yes.
Becoming a recipient of individual homeowner payments, all, you know, and now you've got, you know.
It's an, yeah, it's an extra thing, and also because it's, it's something that would have to be then reported. If it is a charitable contribution, we would have to report it. So, again, they're, they have an office to do this in the Town of Greenburg. I'm not suggesting we need one full-time person to do it, but we would absolutely need to have some additional support. And again, that would be something that all the River towns, or at least, you know, I'm sure, other towns in Greenburg as well, but that would be something that if, if we would move forward, we would, I would most likely say we would partner with somebody to kind of either create some type of part-time position, just to make sure, again, this is something with people's taxes, you don't want, you know, it's very important. And, and, but I, I think, like a lot of others think, we don't, we don't believe that being the, the IRS kind of works for the federal government, that although this is a workaround, I don't believe that they're going to allow this to be charitable, but we can be optimistic.
It's gonna be determined.
Yes.
More, we'll see you over time.
Okay. Health and Safety Report, is there-
Yeah, so, so I just wanted to put that on there, and, and part of the reason I was asked to put this on there, we have been having, reviewing some of our safety protocols. We didn't have a meeting, but in speaking to Amy Cases at Hillside, has been working with our safety consultant to implement some of the recommendations from the report, and one of the recommendations that she wanted me to bring to the Board, just because it would be a change for our parents, is part of the security report didn't think that walking the children down to the pool to meet their parents was like, in our best interest in terms of safety, overall safety, because they're away from the building, and if something were to happen. So, the recommendation is to make a change where the parents would have to walk up to get their kids at the school. Now, again, this is something, as we talk about, like, making sure, like, not just to make a change where people will be, it's, they may have children, they're down at the pool. Now, we were asking the parents to come walk up and meet their children at the side entrance of the kindergarten, because it's, yes.
Are you talking about an evacuation process?
No, no, I'm talking about dismissal process.
Dismissal, okay.
Because when they looked at our procedures, I mean, as, okay, because Amy said that they, they'd, they'd go all the way down to meet them, and now she, oh, no, and she wants to dismiss them through the front door, not through the side door, and have them in front of the kindergarten. She just wanted me to bring it to the Board, because she's gonna make that recommendation to, like, implement that change. But she had said that they were still coming down to meet parents, they're not, everyone's picking up at the front door?
Side door.
Okay, then, it's the front door. But I, she also spoke about bringing people down, so that, that was my confusion, I wasn't sure with the protocol. And they also were requesting additional security support, which we, we had already addressed with our budget. That was all. She just wanted me to bring it, so I said I would.
Okay, so I guess we'll learn more about that.
I just learned more about it, I thought they were down to the pool.
Okay, so, new business. 7A, discussion, the process of replacing resigning Board member Christina Mitchell's seat, and there were a few files attached. So, I think we'll have, I'm assuming some of the people in the audience are here for comments about, about that. I'm assuming some of the people in the audience are here for comments about, about that. I thought, so we as a board will have a conversation about that now. I thought what I would do, I usually like to speak off the cuff, but I figured this was a time that I wanted to write this down, because I think this is, there's a lot in this issue, and I think it's important, I think it's important to be really reflective about this issue. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna read my comments, and I can give you this for the minutes, later, Janine, and then I'm sure other people have a lot of variety of things to share. So my personal opinion on this topic is that I don't think that the board should undertake a process to appoint a trustee to the vacant seat. And I want to go through some of my thinking on that. The first point is that I think there's been increased and evolved interest in district governance since the last election, so since, since May 15. And I'm not of the opinion that we should automatically appoint the fourth vote getter from the last election without a process of solicitation of interest from others in that seat. And I'm sensitive to the fact that Niesha Nunez is here in the audience, so I just want to acknowledge that, and, but I also want to acknowledge that this is not a personal issue having to do with you, Niesha, this is really a process point, and so I'll go through that now, but I just wanted to acknowledge you that you're here. So, so that I think there should be a process of solicitation of interest for the seat. Since the May, since the May 15 election, two significant events have happened in the district, Dr. Sananes' departure as superintendent and Christina Mitchell's departure as a board member. They both happened, and these have evolved the public's interest in and desire to participate in district governance. I believe if we had an election now, we would probably have a different level of interest from the community and candidates, and the different set of topics might be discussed. Second point, okay, so then, and I frame this as a question, why not solicit applications from interested parties and choose another board member right now? And I have two reasons why I feel that's not a good idea. I believe the board is in a process of re-establishing trust with the public. Given the amount of public interest in the board and concerns around transparency since Dr. Sananes' departure, I firmly believe that the voters should decide who takes that seat. The second concern is around time. Soliciting interest, winnowing candidates, interviewing and deliberating requires many hours of discussion and consideration. If there's anything the past year has taught me, it's that as a governing body, we must be focused. We have a limited number of hours to discuss and consider critical issues, of which we already have a lot. The continued progress in special ed audit, approach strategic planning, curriculum instruction and professional development, a facilities bond, and budgeting in a tax cap world where we likely won't have the same growth factor or revenues that we had in the last couple are big issues to tackle, and I don't want to take our attention off of those issues. Second, third question, okay, so why not run a special election right now? That is an option we have on the table. However, a special election costs $12,000, and I'm not a proponent of spending that money right now. One of the reasons I'm not a proponent of spending that money has to do with my fourth point, which is I think that we can be effective as a six-board, six-member board. I think we can very capably operate as a six-person board and don't envision the even number hampering our ability to make decisions. I can't recall any decisions in the past two years that I've been on the board that have gone to a 4-3 vote requiring a tiebreaker. We discuss and debate, but ultimately find a way to move forward as a body. I feel confident that this group at this table of six people can do that again this year. Furthermore, if something truly is an issue that will deadlock us at 3-3, which again, at this point, I do not envision, I would like a trustee election in the current environment, chosen by the public, to be the tiebreaker and not someone appointed by the board. So with that, I'll open it up to the rest of the board, and I'd love everyone's thoughts.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just, I'll add to that without the eloquence of fully prepared remarks. But I've given a lot of thought to this, and at a personal level, I was appointed in, I guess, looking back, was it November of 16? And I look at the three different options available to us, and beginning with the appointment option, you know, where I come out on this is, we have been, the challenge has been put to us of transparency, transparency, more transparency, and I think it's an important challenge. And I think with the changes that you, with the events that have occurred in the district over the last two months, I think that transparency in my mind, and there may be different definitions around this, but to me, at a personal level, transparency involves opening up, you know, if we were to go an appointment route, opening up the, you know, opportunity for indicating interest to, you know, the full community, and letting, you know, the, the broad population put themselves forward and indicate their interest and their qualifications. Because if we're going to appoint, you know, we should wind up being able to look at, you know, all those that say that they're interested. Now, with that in mind, I gave quite a bit of thought as well to the amount of work that we need to accomplish, the number of things that are on our plate to get through, and the amount of time it does take to go through and, you know, review letters of interest, bring everyone in, interview everyone, have a, you know, sort of blind evaluation criteria, then compare notes of a blind evaluation criteria, and then invite back for a second round. Like, it will take away from the work that needs to happen on district, district audit implementation, on, I think there's quite a bit of work to do around the budget and around out-year projections. There's quite a bit of work to do around strategic planning, there's quite a bit of work to do around the facilities bond. So when I look at the work slate ahead of us, I also come to the same conclusion that May is, May will be here before you know it. And I think that we will accomplish more as a governing body, as trustees of the district, working, the six of us, on the existing slate of topics than, you know, going through a process of, you know, what I would expect to be a very healthy response from the community of interest. You know, I think when I put forward my letter of interest in November 16, you know, you Doug, and Jody and Lisa, you'll know better than I, but I think at least eight candidates came forward expressing interest. I would imagine that in 2018, we would be greater than eight. We might look at something like 12, 16, 20 candidates. And out of fairness, I think we would need to look at all of those people and give them a, you know, a full evaluation. And that's just, I think that's more time than this body of six should spend when we will have another election in May. That's my, that's, that's my, my take on the situation.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can say that, you know, I just got sworn in today, but I've been, I've been involved in the interim superintendent search, and, you know, since, six weeks ago since the election, what struck me is that, besides the interim superintendent, you know, not that much else has gotten, has gotten done. And it takes a lot of time. So I guess the question would be, well, why not just give it to sort of Niesha who, who came forth? I've read a lot of emails about, you know, well, she was only 20 behind. My sense, and it's not lost on me, is that Lauren, myself, and Niesha were all about 150 votes behind Jody. And there were a lot of people that didn't want to vote for myself, Lauren, or or Niesha. The fact is, to come 130 votes behind Jody means that people didn't use all three votes. So, so with that said, I, I'm not in favor of just giving it to fourth place in, out of fourth, because I think that the, you know, precedent that I've seen from the last time around was that, you know, we did solicit interest. But with that said, I do think that, you know, spending the next, you know, four to six weeks doing a search like that, especially when we have a number of board retreats that, you know, hopefully will kind of get us in sort of a more cohesive unit, I don't know that it's the best thing for moving forward on the large slate of opportunity, or of, of decisions that need to be made. The one thing that I saw from the community meeting on, on the 12th of June is that, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of priorities that we need to really focus on. So, you know, I read recently about Massapequah, the town of Massapequah, that also had an open board seat, and, you know, has chosen to not fill that seat at this time. So I think there's, you know, there's really four different options. There's go with the, the closest vote getter, do a special election, you know, do it like we did when, when Tim was, was, was chosen, or, you know, let the seat remain empty until, until next year. And I think the priority in my mind is, you know, starting to work with Charlie and getting on the right path to actually get things done. And I don't think that spending the next four to six weeks of, of doing a, a search the way it was done two years ago is the best use of time based on what the community was looking for out of the June 12 meeting as well.
Thank you. I think I have a difference of opinion. And I, I do think that some things have changed in the past month or two with the sudden resignation of our superintendent. But to me, what I heard the change was, was what I heard at the community forum, where the community was upset with the board, and the community said, "We want greater transparency, and we want to be able to trust you." And to me, the way we earn your trust is by making principled decisions. And when we have a precedent, we honor that precedent, unless there's some compelling reason not to. And in this situation, you know, I'm a lawyer, so I look at things through a legal lens, we have a clear precedent. It was in 2008, we had board member Eva Alligood, who I think is here, or she, yep, there she is. Eva, Eva attended her resignation, and basically what you had was, you had a board member resigning, the election had been a couple weeks before, you had the person.
Can you just talk to the board?
Oh, sure, 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 sure. So what you had back in 2008 was Eva resigned, and it was several weeks after an election, and the person who came in next at that point was Donna Lang. She lost by what the president called a handful of votes, 44 votes. She was willing to serve, and she was a very well-qualified candidate. To me, we have the identical situation here. We have, just to go through each of those points, we have a resignation that took place several weeks after an election, we have a candidate who lost by even fewer votes than Donna Lang. She didn't lose by hundreds of votes, she lost by 20. Okay, so let's put it somewhere between, whatever, 15 and 20. She, she's willing to serve, she's even willing to come to these meetings right now, and she's extraordinarily well-qualified. And I just want to recount her qualifications, sorry, I keep looking there. And I, I actually, I think she's extraordinarily well-qualified, and, and she's a great replacement for Christina Mitchell, so even just to compare Niesha and Christina. On the most basic level, Christina was a Hastings High School graduate, as is Niesha. And I will say, Niesha, even as young as middle school, earned our school's highest award for character. She was awarded the Lisa Kaiser Award. Christina is a teacher in the River towns, which I think we all appreciated how helpful that was. Niesha Nunez is a teacher in Artsley. Christina had a deep background in special education, and that is something that we don't have as current board members. Niesha Nunez not only has a sibling with an IEP, not only has been a member of SEPTA for several years, but she has a master's degree in special education. She got out there, she campaigned, that's hard work, and I know it is good to show us who can be on the board. You have to be comfortable sharing your opinions, you have to be comfortable on television. She has done that. In fact, we got a letter from somebody who felt she was a superior candidate. She has the support of the community, we've gotten more letters than I've ever seen on any issue since I've joined the board. In addition, she has a background in racial literacy, which we could really use, and to top it all off, she brings an ethnic background, she is Latina, that is not currently represented on our board and may never have been represented on our board. So, I just don't see any, I don't understand why we are deviating, or why, we haven't made a decision, why we would deviate. And I will say, to leave this position open at this point and where we are in special education is something that I just don't understand. Christina's voice was critical, it was so informative to so many of us. So to leave that seat open without somebody with a, with a better background in special ed, I just, I don't know why we would do that. So, that's how I feel.
I think, I think we should, we should follow the precedent of appointing the next highest vote getter when she only lost by a handful of votes on the heels of an election, well-qualified, willing to serve.
You're a hard act to follow, Lisa. You make a lot of very compelling points about the past, about past precedent, and about Niesha and her qualifications. And for those of you who are, some here of us were at, on the debate, Niesha was extremely impressive and is an impressive candidate for the board. I guess I see things slightly differently than you, and to go to where you started in terms of transparency and trust, I think we're being very transparent about this. I don't, I think, attempting to have this conversation and make a decision like this is transparency. People might not like where people stand or how we vote, but I think we're trying to be as, as out there as we can about a really important decision. I guess I'd say that I am someone who, I have given this a tremendous amount of thought, I have waffled with where I've landed, I was very strongly in favor of having, figuring out a way to fill the seat. But given the options of how we could fill the seat and the option of not filling the seat, I guess I have to say, and to go to one of your other points in terms of Niesha filling, I don't think that we fill seats, we fill people's, we don't fill, like, we're not filling Christina's seat, we're not trying to find a replacement for Christina. It may be that the person who gets that seat is someone who is involved with special ed or SEPTA, but, but I, but one of the things about the board is that, and this is something I've always said strongly and I have deep feelings about, is that you don't, we don't get elected to the board like we're elected to Congress. We don't have constituencies. We all come with different backgrounds, we have different expertise, we rely on that, we go to other people, we hire people with expertise, but being on the board is not about having constituency that you, that we represent. And, and I think we all know how important it is to follow through and attend to, continue attending to the issues that were raised by the special ed audit, and continue to work with those recommendations. And in terms of the whole issue of not having silos around education, I think we're very, very attuned to the fact that we must keep that front, that's one of the things we have to keep front and center. So, I guess what I really, what it comes down to, to me, is our board has, we have a lot of work to do. We are, in part, we are where we are because of things that happened or didn't happen with our board over the past year or two. And I think that in order for the district to move forward, and, you know, a lot of people have said to me, "Wow, aren't you glad you decided to run for the board now?" And I feel like, yeah, I really am glad that I decided to run for the board again. I don't know if my family's so happy, but I am, this was a right decision. And, but we have an enormous work to do, not just the things that you listed, Doug, that are our priorities, but we have, as a board, we have to get our ship sailing.
our priorities, but we have, as a board, we have to get our ship sailing and righted. And we have an enormous amount of work to do to do that. We're attempting to do a retreat over the summer. Even that is enormously difficult, to come up with a time, a day, where everybody has the time to do it. And as much as I think, if I had to choose a way to put someone on the board, it would be to open it up to people as we did in the past because of so much more expressed interest now since the election. I know how much time, it would not be four to six weeks that we would do it in, it would be an enormous amount of time. And I actually think that we need to spend that time getting our house in order, getting our house in order, so that we can, not only do we have all the other things we need to do, yes, it's going to be a little bit more work for people because we'll have fewer people on the board to be on committees, but I think we could be more efficient with our time and make that work in the interest of knowing how we have to each step up to the plate in maybe a slightly different way. But I guess I have to say that I, the place that I land is, I think getting our workings together as a board is what our number-one priority is, absolutely now, before we even move forward. And I would like, if we were going to take time over the next, over the summer and over the early months of school, to be doing that work amongst us while we start to move forward with some of our other priorities. I think that's where we need to spend our time, not opening up and going through the process of finding someone to appoint and then leaving it, leaving it till May for the community to vote for who they would like to have on the board, so.
Well, I submitted a letter in 2016 when Tim was initially appointed to the board. And I am grateful that, and the district should be grateful for all the commitment that Tim put in and then went through an election process to be elected and continued to be on our board. But through that, and through the two processes of one, not being elected and then being elected, I really believe that the trustee should be in elected position. It should be a democratically decided decision by the community. And at this point, we can't predict the type of interest that's occurred in the community since the May 15th election.
So, does anyone have any further thoughts, having heard other people's comments?
I guess my question is as to process. When do you envision us making a decision tonight or not tonight? I will have one last thing, and it's a quote from a former president of the board. Being down a member hurts in terms of getting work done. And I have to say, as board president this past year, you know that I connected a lot of, I would say, volunteering opportunities and nobody would stand up. Not because anybody didn't want to, but you see lives and you see jobs. And there's work that didn't get done, there's work that I had to take on, that Doug had to take on, that we didn't really want to, but nobody else would take on. There was a meeting that we almost couldn't have because we didn't have, we didn't know if we were going to have a forum, you know? Some of us travel a lot for work. So being down a member hurts. And I just will read the comment of Eric Sweeting, who was president and spoke on behalf of the board. And he talked about not leaving the seat vacant. He said, quote, to the enterprise, "With all of the work of the board and all of the committee assignments to be shared among the members, it would be very difficult to operate effectively if we were down one person for a full year."
And actually, Lisa, that was part of, that was my strongest, and I expressed that to Doug, that was one of my biggest concerns, was being down a person in terms of committee work. But I-
I guess the only counter to that, the only, the only counter to that is I, you know, I've done quite a bit of work, you know, in the weeks leading up to this evening, recognizing that I was most likely going to take over the vice president position and that was going to entail quite a bit of work, probably additional work than I've done in the past 18 months that I've been on this board. I started looking around, I started looking around at other high-functioning districts. And I took a look at, you know, where our superintendent is going to, Chapacua, it's a five-member board. So somehow that school district, which is really, that school district, you know, is doing a really nice job, and they're doing it with five. So, you know, I just feel strongly that we, as a group, have a lot of work to do externally, the points that Doug made, internally, the points that Jody made. And, you know, I, you know, my objective for this board, in addition to really moving our school district forward across, you know, some really very specific key areas, which, you know, we could all, I think, you know, we could all pick three and we triangulate them very quickly. But it's also to, when we get to the May election, you know, and, you know, I very much hope Nanisha runs again, the winners of that election, there'll be three seats available for, you know, to be voted upon in May. And the objective is for the winners of that election to really come into a high-functioning board. And I would be quite candid on camera, I don't think we've been a high-functioning board in 18 months that I've been here. And our job is to really get there, our job is truly, really to get there. So I definitely am very respectful of the workload issue, truly am. I think we can do it. I think other districts are doing it with fewer and doing a really nice work. And so that's, you know, that's, I think, you know, but I'm not comfortable taking a big time load that's going to go through, you know, a letters-of-interest-calling process. So anyway, any case, that's just my, you know, that's, you know, I've spent a lot of time thinking about pros and cons, pros and cons, pros and cons, but, you know, my number-one pro is that, you know, we take the limited amount of time that we each individually have available to this work, and we, you know, get going kind of effective immediately, working with a new superintendent, you know, on our top priorities, so.
I think I would just respond, I get what everybody's saying about it takes a long time to interview people, and I don't think we should do that. I haven't heard anything in this discussion about why we shouldn't follow this precedent. I mean, I've heard things are different now, but to me, they're different in that we have to earn the trust. And we have a precedent that was great when we appointed Donna Lang, and for some reason, people aren't wanting to go that rate. It saves the time, we're not going to have to do an interview process. She was elected by almost as many people as elected you and you, it was closer than it was 10 years ago. We've had, as I said, more letters than I've ever seen in my time on the board in support of her. So I just, and she's an extremely qualified candidate, she brings things to the board, and not saying that a certain seat is a certain way, but she brings things to the board that we haven't had, that we desperately need. So I just haven't heard, I'm just kind of baffled as to why, but may I finish speaking? I just haven't heard why we're going to abandon precedent, especially as we're trying as hard as we can to regain the trust of this community.
Now, I don't want you to position this as, you know, my statement being anything against Nanisha. My statement is really that I don't agree that fourth place, 170 votes behind first place, is the same as losing by 20 points. I also feel that the argument about the precedent doesn't really add up because Tim was just brought on two years ago in a completely different fashion, so.
The difference there, and I was trying not to bring this out, was the next vote getter lost by hundreds of votes, so it was different.
Yeah.
But it happened once, which is, you know, if you read that article at the end, Eric Sweeting says, "In the previous two times, the seat wasn't filled."
He said it wasn't filled, I can actually read you his quote. He didn't say it wasn't filled, he said it was-
I know what he says, he says, he says, no, Lisa, I know what he says.
It was closer to the elections, and that's what he said.
Right, so we don't have any dates on when that was, but I guess my point, but my-
You got to say, five weeks is pretty darn close to an election.
So, but to back, but back to your, back to your question, I think that sitting through that community meeting and listening to people share their concerns, it was, it was a whole host of issues, concerns, I would broadly put them in the topic of governance. How is the district being governed? And I think if you listen to the debate between Jody and Jeremy and Nanisha and Lauren, it was an issue-based debate about topical issues in the district, special ed and curriculum. What you didn't hear very much in that debate was broad capabilities, broad discussions around an ability to govern a complex system. And I think that a lot of people in the populace that voted didn't have that on their mind at that moment. They didn't have governance on their mind. Five days after the election, a superintendent who was beloved by many in the community said he wanted to leave. And at that moment, everyone said, "What is going on? What is happening?" And in the ensuing days, weeks, and now, and now, almost two months, I think what some people in the community have come to understand is something, and I don't know exactly what it is, around governance of the district isn't quite right. And I think that if you asked people now, "What would be at the top of your priority list as it pertains to what we need?", it would be governance. And I don't think that the governance topic and the broad ability to manage and help manage a complex organization was a topic that Jody touched on, was a topic that Jeremy touched on, was a topic that Lauren touched on, was a topic that Nanisha touched on. And I think right now, it is the most important topic. And so if you want to ask me, "What is the thing that is on people's mind that they would want to weigh in on?", it is governance of our district, and I don't think anyone in our community has weighed in on that topic.
Doug, just, and not to beat this to death, we got tons of letters, not one of them mentioned governance. I don't, I don't know that your read is right.
Where are these tons of, wait, where are these tons of letters you're referring to?
The ones that were sent to the board in support of Nanisha. I just don't know that your read is right about-
I have a problem with some of those letters that were being sent, okay, Lisa? It's, I want to be transparent, I want to be open. I think it's really important for this community to start having open conversations about this stuff. Let's say that someone had a thought about a different way to go. No one has been reaching out to pockets of this community to essentially say, "Hey, do you have a broader, complex way of thinking about how we should govern? Could you write a letter?"" I don't think anyone's been reaching out. I think that when I read letters oftentimes, there is a pointed letter-writing campaign going on, and there are requests in the community for those letter-writing campaigns, which isn't to say they're not valid, they're very valid. But what it does tell me is that there are likely a lot of other people with a broader other sets, and who are not writing letters, who do have clear points of view of things. And I think to base, I would ballpark it at 15 letters we received, to base a decision on 15 letters from a portion of the population, 15 out of 8,000 people in the town, to me, does not constitute support, and it doesn't talk to this broader governance issue that I'm talking, that I'm talking about, which if you ask me as someone who thinks about this topic on a daily basis, what people were asking when they stood up with frustration at our community meeting was they were asking for everything you want in a good governance body, which is clarity of goals, transparency, you want, you know, an ability to advance complex topics and make decisions when they're uncomfortable. And I think that if we ran an election right now, there would just be, Nanisha might win it, I don't know, right? But I think it's a different set of issues. And I think who, I think who got voted in at that time, it was a different set of issues on people's mind. As a result of that, I think if we were to move forward, we have two options in my mind. One, we take it upon ourselves to bring, to open it up, get people to send in their applications, and we assess that with that broader governance goal on our mind. Or we hold a special election right now, and Nanisha might win that special election. It's very possible. But I think we're holding that election with a broader set of topics on our mind when we have it. And those are the topics that were clearly brought up in that meeting. So that's my point of view.
I just want to say two or two ideas. Given that we just spent a meeting talking about approximately $10,000 just so we could have coaches, I would not be in favor of spending the money to have a special election. It's not how I think we should be spending our money personally, although I see the value of having an election. I also want to say that I think we should make a decision at this meeting tonight about how we're going to move forward in terms of the best use of our time and what we can do. I think different positions are-
I'd like to propose that there's a lot of public here, and I think the public has thoughts on this. I think, you know, many of the people, I see your faces and I know your names and I've seen the letters come in, and so I think many of the people who wrote the letters are here. I think what I'd love to do is open it up for, so skip over the board committee stuff if we don't get to that right now, that, you know, we'll talk about a little bit of that, but is to skip over that and open it up for public comment right now, so why don't we do that?
Three minutes for first.
Yeah, three minutes each.
My name is Cassandra Sweet, so I suspect that you have read my letter, which I circulated with my friends and the many other people in the town that I know have been concerned about many issues, issue issues, and governance issues as well. And I guess in that sense, I would say that, you know, obviously there are specific policy areas and specific aspects of Nanisha's qualifications that those of us who supported her thought were rather extraordinary and something to be celebrated, something that truly filled a deficit that this community is facing at this moment. More broadly, however, I would say that I am disappointed tonight. I'm very disappointed in the idea that under the con notion of governance and transparency of governance, that we would exclude a member who is qualified, graduated from our community and got statistically significant, you know, insignificant differential in votes, breaking a previous precedent. I fear that the message that that would send to the community would not be the one that you would hope, that would be one of, "We are going to maintain the order," right, "We're going to just move forward with all the work we have and all the business we have to do." I fear that the message to supporters of Ms. Nunez, to parents, students, would be one that, "This is a club, we are breaking with precedence, and although, obviously, it's a natural instinct to say it's not personal, unfortunately, the history is, does not provide evidence of that." You know, a lot of us came here tonight expecting that, obviously with a precedent having existed, with a candidate that is qualified, with a difference in votes, as they were at nine votes, not 20, that we would see the board move forward rapidly and efficiently installing a person that represents a voice that for us is desperately needed in the board. So I would just say that I would take care to call on the sort of higher god of governance when in fact, the feeling about governance that might be transmitted tonight would be one of exclusion and a creation of a certain precedence based on the candidate that we have at hand. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Jennifer Destin, and I live at 140 Fairmont Avenue. I find that I'm having difficulty prioritizing the order in which I want to share the things I want to- things I want to share, so if they're a little disjointed, I apologize. The first thing I want to say is that I'm very concerned about the notion that there would be a vote on this tonight. I actually think that it goes a little bit opposite from transparency. This was just a line item in the agenda, which we go, which I as co-president have to go through painstakingly every time there's a board meeting to alert people as to whether or not they want to come. But if I had not, I would have not known this was up for discussion. I think you probably have heard one point of view, and there are likely multiple points of views. Whatever the decision is ultimately made, I would just be very hopeful that a decision was made tonight and let other people write letters and speak to what their point of view is. The notion of leaving the seat open for 10 months personally troubles me. I think that as much as we talk about priorities, we've had a priority set. There was an audit. It showed that there were many places in which things were not running smoothly, appropriately, or to the best interest of many students in this community. I think that's a priority, and it should remain a key priority. We have lost a very valuable voice in terms of that priority, and without an understanding of how the seat is going to be filled, not 10 months from now, when more students leave our district, more students fall farther behind, is of great importance to me. I do, however, understand the conundrum, because it doesn't feel like there was a clear winner for the seat. In no, no disrespect, but there was a mountain of difference between the first-place winner and everyone else. And in fact, people were so torn by what to do that a writing candidate jumped in at the last minute. I don't think this was an election of huge consensus, and I do think that the narrative has changed. So I don't know what I would do at this point, but I'm just asking that further consideration be made.
Georgia Lopez, resident of Hastings, and I'm actually not going to endorse anyone. I do have a, a bit of a bone to pick. The very nature of an election means that you answer to a constituency.
I'm sorry, that you?
The very nature of an election means you answer to a constituency. If everybody were appointed, then you wouldn't have to answer to anybody, but the fact that you were elected by people means that those are the people you have to answer to. It's not fair to think that people in this room don't matter. And that's essentially what you say when you say that you don't answer to, to a constituency. So please don't say something like that. That, that is, it's truly offensive to me. I'm sorry. I, I really need, I need you to understand that. And I, maybe that's not entirely what you meant, but, but that is what you said.
Just one thing, if you back up a little.
Sorry. Yeah, it is, sorry. I felt like there was breathing going on. The other thing too is, I, I totally agree that this cannot just end tonight. This is something that needs to be discussed to the broader community. There are certainly people that have stated and made a decision about how they feel and what they want, but you're right, there are many people that have not spoken up. Maybe they don't know what's going on. I find that to be very common in this village, that there is a lack of understanding or just a general knowledge that's lacking overall across the entire village. I don't know how to help share this information. I mean, you send emails, you know, we, we, we talk to each other, clearly we're always all talking to each other. Tell us how to help you. Do you need for me to write to everybody that I know and say, do me a favor? There is this situation, this issue in front of the board, and we need to tell them what we think and how we feel? I mean, if that's what you need, I will do that. I know how I feel, and I've shared that with my, with the people that I think might, you know, agree with me, or even if they disagree. I mean, that happens. But ultimately, I think you need to figure out a way to get the word out so you can actually get a response. My concern is that, you know, you've heard from 15 people, maybe it was more than that, that's because those people are talking to each other about that specific issue. But the board has not said to anybody in the community, tell us what you think. That was not in your email to the board, to the, to the village. It was, this is a line item on the agenda. Nobody said, we would like for people to come to the meeting and give us public opinion or to write letters to us expressing their opinion about what should happen next. And that's a problem. That's where the transparency is lacking. That's where the communication isn't coming through. And I love the fact that you guys want to be transparent. I've stood up in front of you before and talked about that very issue. It really hurts. But we need to understand what it truly means. What does transparency really mean? So please ask the community for their input and then see what happens. Thank you.
I'm going to be kind of quick. I'm Melissa Goldberg, I'm a resident of Hastings. I'm not going to comment, I, I, I'm learning as I'm sitting here about what the different options are and the pros and cons, and I hear what everyone has to say, and I think I'm sort of piggybacking off of what you just said. I'm devastated that Christina has left. I am equally devastated that Tony has left. And I think to say that it, we don't need somebody on the board who has an experience, who has experience with either firsthand as a parent or as an educator with special ed, oh my God, I felt crushed to hear that come out of your mouth. And I think that there are a lot of people in this room that feel differently, and there are a lot of people who are not in this room that feel differently. And, you know, I don't know if the next board member will have that experience, but I think it is a huge loss to have Christina not on the board anymore and to have lost a superintendent who clearly was dedicated to those children in this district that have special needs. And I just had to say that, so that's all.
Hi, I'm Michelle DeBoda, I'm a resident of Hastings. I've never spoken at one of these meetings before, and I came straight from the pool. So, but I had to be here. So, so I was at the, the meeting that, that you keep referring to, or the, yes, and there was a lot said at that meeting. And, you know, I think everyone at that point, you know, myself at least, we were feeling, we had a lot of raw emotions, and so maybe some of the things that people were speaking about at that point aren't necessarily, you know, the things that are on our minds now, like a month later or whatever. I know that one of the things that's on my mind right now is that I feel like every week or so, I learned of a new friend who is now sending their child to private school because the services and the, the support that we provide in our district is not working for their child, which is not anything I ever thought I would learn when I moved to Hastings on Hudson for the schools. So I'm imagining that the seat, Christine was, Christina, Christine, Christina, I don't know. But I'm sure that a lot of the people who voted for her, because I was not very engaged back then, and now I will be, I'm sure a lot of the people who voted for her voted because of her commitment to supporting students who, with, with special needs. And I think, I understand the thought that it's not her seat and we're not filling someone's shoes per se, but I think that a vacancy on the board that was once filled by someone who had that expertise and that passion for serving the families of students with special needs, I think, you know, I don't understand how the board could possibly function in the way the community wants it to function with that seat vacant. And so I was at that meeting, you're right, I didn't hear anyone talk about governance issues at that meeting, but now we are. And so I think if you're really talking about listening to your community and you're listening to the community from what we said on June 12th, but now you have people in the community here saying that they would like the seat filled, and I don't have a personal preference of how that seat is filled, but I think that the board should really consider having this be a seven-person board. Thank you.
My name is Kim Meisner, and I've lived in Hastings for 11 years. And I'm, I'm going to say what I was going to say, even though it's been said several times, just to keep hammering this point home. I think that one of the reasons we're thinking, you're thinking of making the decision, you are, about this seat, is because Tony decided to leave right after this election and everything changed. But my understanding is that one of the reasons that felt so devastating to a lot of members of our, of our community is because he made the special needs community feel heard in a way they had really been feeling abandoned by this district for some time. So I don't see how that's such a change. So as Christina was such an advocate for CEPTA and for our special needs students and families who have been trying to navigate a really struggling system, in my 11 years, I have lost, one of my best friends moved to Pleasantville, she tried for years with her kids here. I continue to see my friends' kids having to go to private school, they're looking at real estate in other towns. It's heartbreaking for them, for all of us in this community. So we may not be able to replace Christina specifically, I know in her, but hers was a voice that was lacking on this board and that we as a desk, as a district desperately need on this board. And I worry about your ability to right this ship without it.
I'm Elizabeth Coletta, and I've actually lived in Hastings for 22 years, and I also feel strongly that it would be very hard to right this ship without another person on the board, because the board has struggled so much with dealing with people's challenges, with getting the services that they need for their kids. And so to me, to go on and say that we can do this job in this challenging time without considering who could help you do that, I think is really going to be a very difficult for you. And I think while it hasn't, it has been said, but it hasn't been said enough, that there has been a precedent with how the seat gets filled when someone vacated a spot on the board. And I think when Donna Lang vacated, when filled the seat on the board after it became available, everyone all worked together and it was a very positive experience. And I really, Lisa said it so much more articulately than I can, but the credentials that the fourth person who ran for the Board of Education has are very strong credentials for the needs that I hear time and time again from this community. No one on this board has those credentials. No one is an educator. No one has personal experience with special needs. And I think that that is something that is incredibly lacking in terms of this community. I'm trained as a speech-language pathologist, I work with people with disabilities, and I think people that work with people with disabilities and have personal experiences with that can listen to families in a way that I think hasn't really been so often in our district. So I would actually urge the board to fill the seat, to consider the precedent that we had in terms of going to our very recent election. While Anisha's votes were said they were so much less than Jody, so were, you know, many votes were so less than Jody, right? But she got hundreds of votes, you know? And so there is a strong support for Anisha Nunez in this community, and I think she would do an excellent job in filling the seat. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Amy Nichols, I'm a resident, and I want to just add to the voices saying, please don't, do not make this decision tonight. I'm one of the people that saw it as a line item and really wanted to actually hear this discussion with, with an, coming with an open mind. Like, I actually am a big supporter of Anisha's, I think she has a great wealth of experience and talent, but beyond that, I wanted to hear this discussion and find out where you all were coming from with it before I wrote to let you know my opinion. And so I'm still struggling to understand why we wouldn't have someone who I think was pretty, I mean, I think pretty selected by the community as much as, as many of the other new members have been. And so, you know, I, I really think that that should be given a lot of attention. I think the letters that you've received thus far should be given a lot of attention, and I agree. Elicit, if you think that there is voices that haven't been heard, that may have other opinions, please elicit that and don't discount what you already have and what you may get in the future. And thank you so much for putting this thought into it.
I'm Eva Allgood, I was referenced earlier. I'm a resident of Hastings, my kids are out of the school system. I've had a lot of experience with process, I'm on the planning board here in Hastings. And I'd like to just share kind of a question that came into my mind as I heard your deliberations, and I can see that you're all giving it a lot of thought and struggling with it, but I don't understand the argument that you're going to be more efficient and that you'll be able to come together as a body by not filling this seat. I really think consideration to not only the experience that Anisha brings, but her perspective and the diversity of experience is really critical to better decision-making. I think in my...
Back up from the mic a little bit, I won't make those noises. There you go.
In my experience, it's healthy to have a difference of opinion. Tonight, I heard the majority have basically the exact same opinion. Now, I know, I respect the process, I know you all have given it a lot of thought, you've talked to each other, you've consulted with people in your circles, but sometimes you need to have somebody in the room who is not in your circle, who has a different perspective, a very valuable perspective that is critical. And I see some of the issues in Hastings derived from group think and not really understanding a different perspective. And it's healthy to have that. So given your current state of being concerned about what happened this past year, and frankly, I don't know what happened, I, you know, I think there's probably lots of factors, but part of that process of figuring out what happened and how to make, how to make things better is to welcome a voice with a difference of perspective and some expertise that would be really, really valuable at this critical moment. So I think despite having some arguments that I can understand how you came to, I would ask you to reconsider and appoint Anisha, because I think she will add a very, very critical, important perspective and voice to your deliberations and many votes that you'll be making this year that are critically important. So thank you. And also, I just want to say, sorry, I know Anisha personally, I wanted to mention that, she was my former neighbor, she babysat my kids. Not only do I have enormous respect for what she's accomplished since she graduated our schools, but she is a wonderful person and she, I believe, I also want to say, I really think Lisa's point about precedent says a lot, and it, you know, sometimes you have to look back at how a decision looks like from the outside. You get to a decision because all the paths made sense as you were getting there, but when you look at the totality, you say, how come Anisha didn't get the same treatment as occurred in other situations with similar, you know, with similar qualified candidates who were appointed? Sometimes you just have to look at that and say, how can we let that happen? So, thank you very much.
Rhannon Platt, Hastings resident, I've been here for 15 years. I did reach out to the board today just with my own personal thoughts, and I'm hearing all the opinions here, so I'm going to be a bit of an outlier compared to everybody. Honestly, I don't think the seven-person board has worked very well for us over the past year or so, and I think that became evident in the community meeting that we had. The board has itself admitted that it had failings. I think there's a huge amount of distrust that's been in, in town that came to the fore, I think, at the community meeting that we had. Truly, I think there needs to be a lot of progress within the school district, special education audit has really not seen any progress. We need to start getting things done with this community, and I think that talks into some of what you were saying. I think instead of focusing on just filling a seat as it's vacant, and I can't speak for Anisha because I'm not familiar with the credentials at all, I think we need to move forward and start getting things done as opposed to sitting around and waiting. And I also think that this is something the community needs to be involved in, but I think that should be through formal elections, not through anything else. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lloyd Donder, I live at... I live at 25 Maple Avenue. I find it kind of interesting that what I've heard from this board tonight, that board members have a limited amount of time, that the former president had a difficult time getting people to step up to do projects last year, comments about the board just not being efficient in the last 18 months or getting enough done. And I'm having a difficult time understanding how with all those issues, having a six-person board is going to somehow get more things done than the seven-person board, because I don't see how you're going to be able to do more with less. And I understand the issue about not having, there isn't like there's a seat that's for special education. But make no mistake, there's a lot of work that has to be done with the special education audit. And the fact of the matter is, when you're down one board member, you're going to have a lot more pressure on the other board members to do this study and to put forth the effort that this issue really deserves. And you're not going to be able to do it with fewer people. And on top of that, you don't have the experience that you had before. And that's just a fact. I mean, we're not talking about putting a special ed person on the board, but we are talking about the fact that it's going to put a lot more pressure on everyone else there. And in regards to special education, we have come a long way. I'm not going to get into what we've been through over the years, but there's been a lot, and we've come pretty far, and we need to go a lot further. And I think a lot of people don't understand that in this, in the order that was, that we had, it isn't just about special education. It's about all education, okay? There's something called, and it gets very technical, the MTSS, the multi-tiered system of supports. Basically, what that means is giving all students the supports. It isn't just a child labeled as being special needs. It's giving supports to all children before they even get to that issue. A lot of people don't understand that. And these are issues that have to be addressed. And I just have, I have a huge amount of fear that with fewer board members, you just will not be able to give the emphasis that's deserved on this. And I would really, I would really request that you not make a decision upon this tonight, that we give it a little bit of time and get more feedback. I think it's too important of a topic to just decide on tonight. Thank you.
Hi, Mia Johnson, resident of Hastings. I strongly, I feel very strongly about not keeping the seat open for 10 months. That's nearly a full year. I think that's a very, I think that would be a very big mistake. There's way too much going on in this district for six people to handle. I also think, I also, I also don't think that the board should automatically appoint the candidate who received, who was next in line. I think that it isn't precedent, as we know. Tim was appointed in a different process more recently. I think that too much has happened since the May election and that I just don't think it would be appropriate to fill the seat in that manner. I think that the community should be invited to submit a letter of interest. I think this is a process that could be held quickly, expeditiously. I think if community members are invited to submit letters explaining their qualifications and why they wish to be on the board, they could be reviewed in a quick manner, similar to how Tim was, was, how that process was run. The interviews were held in public, and then deliberations were held in an executive session. That's the most recent precedent. And I think given the state of affairs, that is the best way, and I would urge you to consider that. And when you are considering if, if the board does pick the next person, I think it is important to consider the many qualifications that Christina brought. And it wasn't just that she is the parent of a child who receives special education or that she is a teacher. She also was incredibly engaged and passionate. She spoke up at every meeting. We need someone on the board who is going to be informed and committed and passionate and engaged and asking the tough questions. Katrina, I'm Katrina, Christina would ask tough questions about anything, not just about special ed, and we need that voice. And I don't know who that's going to be, but I think it's really important. I think the Massapequa article was interesting. I read it. But I think that seat being left open sort of didn't matter because that board member wasn't doing anything anyway. So it's not like you were losing someone who had an active voice. Christina has such an active voice, and it's just imperative that we get that. And I don't know who that person is, and I really hope if this, if the process is open as I suggest, and I really hope Nanisha puts her name in, I think it would be fantastic. And there might be other fantastic people out there too, but that's just a process that in my mind, I think should be given due consideration. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So maybe the board could just come back together and talk briefly about next steps and process.
Can I ask you a question? Is this something, I mean, is this something that, there's a couple of different ways to look at, you know, even kind of keeping the board seat open. It doesn't have to be until the next election. Is it something that we could spend the next couple of months focused on figuring things out and then get back to this issue in October or three months or whenever?
Certainly, yeah. I mean, those, those are, those are all options. We can run a special election now. We could appoint now. We could talk about it for two months, three months, and appoint later. There's, there's, you know, as you look at, so I did speak with our attorneys today about the different options that you have. And you pretty much, you know, the big three are what has been discussed. Appoint someone, and you can do that through the way that it's, you know, been done, two different ways here in our district. One is a vote getter in the last election. One is through people putting in applications. You can run a special election or you can leave a seat open. And those are your, you know, those are your three options.
What's the timing? Like, is it-
There really is no timing. There really is no timing about when you have to do that. Now, what, what can happen is if there's a perception-
I'm sorry, I did, I did read that if there is a special election, it needs to be 90 days within the vacancy of the person.
Maybe that one, yeah, I have to go back and read-
That, that one option, not the appointment, but if a public, an election itself has to be within 90 days.
Of the reservation.
Yes.
Yeah, within 90 days. The board has its option. They also elect to call-
Within 90 days.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's for a special election.
Right, for the special election, it's within 90 days. But if it's appointing, it doesn't have to be within 90 days. And so if we want to run a special election, it would have to be by 90 days after June 30th.
But there's another option of not leaving it open for 10 months, but spending time to just focus on what we need to get done and putting it on the back burner so that we're not spending the next six weeks kind of taken away from focused on special ed or focused on all these other priorities that we've talked about, and then getting back to it. I mean, that is a kind of another option to look at from a timing perspective.
I have concerns about letting it sit on the back burner. We have Dr. Katzman, who is coming in at some unspecified date, but Dr. Katzman is supposed to be reporting out to us, I think, in September or October. And again, we're not designated in a special ed seat, but it may be that, you know, if we go with Nanisha or an application or whatever, that voice is going to be really important. So I, I would call this more imperative. To me, our summertime is our slow time. So maybe, maybe we want to schedule a couple of hearings where people, you know, you know, people travel, so I would say certainly do more than one date, but maybe we set up a couple of times when people can come in and talk to the board and share their views. And also, you know, as people are saying, let's invite them, you know, e-blast and say, give us letters, and then we'll put a cap on it, say, I bet.
Keep in mind, I don't want to cut you off, but just keep in mind with open meeting laws and, you know, there's only so much time, and that does take, it's a zero-sum game. It does take away time from focusing on all the other priorities, right?
But the summer is our slow time. That's what I'm saying. We don't have a meeting scheduled until August 27th, so there's really-
But that, I mean, I think it gets into-
Our, our big work is not over the summer at all.
No, but I, but I do think it gets into a broader challenge we've had as a board, at least in my two years, that I think we haven't taken advantage of doing work over the summer. I think there's a lot of good goal work that we could have done that we didn't do. I think there's a lot of good aligning of the board work that we could do that we haven't done. I think when you think about the committees, which we, you know, haven't had an opportunity to talk about tonight because we're talking about this, so this is a very small microcosm of how an issue like this, what I really think is important for the public to understand is that we're volunteers with a very limited amount of time. But Lisa, I really feel strongly about this because I've now been on the board for two years. And I think what oftentimes it's really easy for the public to do is, is zero in on one issue and then go home, have dinner, or breakfast the next morning, go off to their job, and they get to not think about it until they miraculously hear a decision six weeks down the road, and they don't understand the time and energy that's been put in. Some of us have jobs that are on this board, and some of us are like really working hard. You have been tremendous in your ability to help us advance stuff because you haven't, and that has been really, really helpful over the last year. And, and, you know, and I'm afraid, you know, and that's why I've always said that I think it's critical that we have, some people have jobs and some people don't have jobs, because that's a really helpful thing. But I really do think, I mean, I will say to some of the points from the public, how could you see that six people could advance stuff more than seven? I see it every day in my work. Three-person teams often do a lot more work than six-person team. All I'm saying is, I don't think that these kind of simple, high-level arguments that, you know, I think there's a conflating, for example, of issues, as you say, we need to make progress around special education and we need to appoint someone. I think that the idea that those two have a direct impact on each other is, is, it's, it's not a direct correlation. There's ways people can come in and actually detract from an ability to move a team forward. I see it every day in my work. I do, I can't stress enough that it's so easy to show up at board meetings, and I'm not taking anything away from the public, I'm just trying to be damn honest, I really am, that it's easy to show up at meetings and have an opinion on something without seeing the blood in the guts of what goes into this stuff. And I got to tell you, I think we've lost a lot of time over the last two years. I am really afraid of losing time. I mean, Tim and I, this week, got together and started drafting out a set of goals because we're like thinking to ourselves, you know what? If we don't do this now, we're not going to have it done by August 6th. And then by August 6th, we're going to, what are we going to review? And then it's going to be the 27th, and then we're going to be into the school year, and then we, and, you know, we get, we get waylaid with lots of decisions. I, I, I hear what you're saying, and I understand that point of view and perspective that, you know, that we need to, we need to move fast. I personally remain a believer that if we were to go down this path, we should open it up, right? That we should open it up, that too much has changed, too many different people have different points of view, and Nanisha's a highly qualified candidate, right? It's not an either or. It's a both and. It's both things have changed and we need to get another voice from the public, and Nanisha's highly qualified. And so I, you know, firmly believe that that is something that the public needs to weigh in on. So I think leaving this meeting, I would tend to agree with what some people have shared, which is that we need to give it more time and thought. And so that's my personal opinion. Then we can talk about how, if everyone's aligned with that.
But just to respond to you, I think, you know, we're all talking about transparency over and over again. This community is begging for more input on this discussion. To me, backburnering it means what a backburner means. It's not as important as other things. This is incredibly important, especially, you know, I don't want to say more than-
I never use the word backburner, though, Lisa did.
Okay, Jeremy used the word backburner. Okay, and there's still, you know, so far as the process, no, we haven't decided on it. What I'm suggesting is we take, we, we set two meeting days. It can be an evening and a weekend. And I hear everybody saying, we only have limited time, we only have limited time. I'm not trying to be rude, but then why'd you run for office? I mean, I'll tell you over Christmas, no, and this is, this is something that has bothered me over Christmas. No, no, don't, Jeremy, you've interrupted me three times. You really can't do that, okay? So at Christmas vacation, I had two weeks with my children. I gave that up to join our mayor, Peter Swiderski, and Paul Finer to spend our time in Greenberg trying to get tax breaks for our community. That's what you do when you're a public servant. You give up that time. I only had my kids for two weeks. I wound up having them for less than two weeks. It's what we do. If you can't give up that time, then you shouldn't be running for public office. I'm asking, I'm suggesting that we have two meetings because we have summer vacation. Come, tell us your feelings, and then we will promise a prompt decision after that so this doesn't sit on the back burner too long. To me, that makes sense. It's reasonable.
Yeah, I think that, I think there's, there's an option for that. I believe there's an option for writing, you know, putting something out, a blast with very explicit request to ask people to write in.
I would do that, I would do both.
Yeah, well, I don't know.
But I think we could do it from both angles, in person and, and in writing. I, I think that's what we're hearing.
Look, I would be willing right now, and let's poll the board, I'd be willing to propose one public hearing and an invitation to write in on this so we can get a variety of views on the topic to inform our perspectives. And, you know, I, you know, would be, you know, willing, you know, personally, and I'd love to hear from the rest of the board, to commit to making a decision by the end of August on this, which is, you know, look, it's six weeks away, eight weeks away, but there's a lot going, you know, we're still, we're running a board retreat on August 6th, hopefully, you know, I know August 6th or 27th are the two dates. That's an eight-hour day. We're trying to get a lot of productive work done. Work goes into that. And so I don't want to diminish that, right? And so I, I think to, to, to say that we want to fast-track this in the next four weeks, personally, I don't think is the right idea. And if that, if this is such an important issue for it to get filled to, you know, a wide variety of people in the community, and we hear that, I don't think filling it on September 15th versus, you know, August 20th is that big of a difference.
Now, I can, that schedule, that works for me. I didn't say four weeks. I just said we should do it, and the summer is our, our relatively slow time. So I can live with that.
But, but, you know, I'm speaking for me. I don't know how everyone else feels.
Yeah, I'll just, you know, firstly, thank you, everybody, for, A, coming out, obviously, and, you know, it's approaching 10 o'clock and you're still here, so it's reflective of the importance that you put on this topic. And thank you for everyone that raised a public comment. You know, I look back over these public comments, you know, they span, they span the array of issues that we're faced with. There's one thing I want to sort of address specifically. I think a comment was made indicating, you know, a disbelief or an, you know, not comprehending how one could do more with less. And, you know, at the risk of like pulling back the covers a little bit, you know, I think the board has been challenged, and this is not unique to this board, but, you know, it's, I think it's true of boards in lots of different, both public and private situations, with focus, sticking with high-level, important topics, and leadership on those topics. You know, I just want to remind people to go back and look at, you know, some of the footage from September of 17, where we were talking about goalposts. I spent hours talking about goalposts. What I'm trying to do, what we're trying to do is pick our goals and drive hard and fast and concretely towards those goals, because that's what makes better schools for our kids, you know? And most of us have young kids on this board, and we want better schools for our kids. So that's, that's, that just kind of illuminates my view, not that seven is bad, but that six is enough, right? So that's, that's just my view on that point. But, that said, I definitely am respectful of the please don't make a decision tonight view. So I'm, I'm good with that. I'm good, I would suppose, I mean, I've sort of gone back and forth, but I'm good with a public hearing on the comment. I'm good with, or a public hearing on the issue. I'm also good with soliciting further write-ins around it. I think that the right person with the right background across, you know, an array of topics that comes into a high-functioning board will- topics that comes into a high-functioning board will make, you know, will continue, as Charlie said, push a good district towards great. So, you know, I guess, that's, that's, that's how I feel about this issue. You know, I know that there's sort of different views on what constitutes transparency, and I don't think we're going to get a solution on that tonight. I'm not sure that we're going to get a solution on that in the long run. So I guess, you know, speaking for myself, and hopefully others on the board agree, you know, I'm certainly comfortable acknowledging the voices that were raised, saying, "We will take that, you know, take that input, push the decision to a later date, solicit further input, and try to come up with something that ultimately works in the best interest of the district." That's it, thank you.
Hey Doug, can I say one quick thing? Am I allowed to do that?
Yeah, just hold on one second. We'll get to second public comment, just a second.
I just have a thought. If we are entertaining the idea of opening more public comment, having a forum, even if that's sort, if we are going to have a board retreat in August, I would argue that if we are entertaining the idea of an appointment or some kind of democratically-appointed person, that it occur before the board retreats so that that person has an opportunity to come in full speed ahead as a whole group. So that's an argument, not to put it off.
I appreciate that, Lauren, although I have to tell you honestly, even if we were going to do that, apart from just appointing someone, I don't think it's realistic to think it could be done by August 6th.
I completely understand, but I just wanted to-
I agree with you in terms of there being a part of it.
I understand the process might take longer than that.
Look, I certainly heard what people have to say. I feel compelled later in the meeting to want to correct some things that may have sounded like I was saying, or misinterpretations. I'm not sure that I'll do that. But I don't want to have this turn into just being something defensive. But I do feel, having heard what people say, I'm on board with this suggestion, the suggestion to go forward with some kind of a public forum, but, and meetings where we could get more input. I do have concerns that often what happens in this community, though, is that when there's an issue, it could be whether we're cutting basketball coaches, okay? And that we all know how to get people to come forward, and I just hope in this case, not that, I just hope that people will feel comfortable coming forward with a wide variety, if there's a wide variety, maybe there isn't. But, you know, it's going to be, people who have a lot of skin in the game on an issue will make time to come to a meeting in the summer. That is a concern I have, but that's not a reason not to have a meeting and not to hear from people. And other people can write in. You don't have to come to a meeting, and I think we have to make that clear, that people should write in letters if they want to express something and can't be present in a meeting, if we're attempting to hear from the board.
And I'm going to suggest that today is, today is-
Nine.
So how about within the next week, why don't we send an e-blast out? And we'll set a date for a hearing, and we will, you know, spell out exactly where to send an email, if you want to send an email to us, and then we'll give an ending date so that the community will know exactly, and we'll set out the various options. And so sometime, but let's give ourselves a week from today, how's that? To get that email out so that everyone will, you know, everyone will have the information they need.
First, I want to apologize for cutting you off. I guess I'm in favor of going this direction as well. I just think the one thing we should make clear is what the purpose of the meeting is, so that it's not coming with, you know, I'd like people-
Campaign.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like people, especially if you're reaching out to your friends, to sort of lay out what the options are. You can say what you think is the right option, but, but what I don't want to wind up seeing is just, you know, people coming to sort of, like you said, campaign, and then just sort of, you know, I want it to be a discussion of, you know, really understand what, where the community sits, and then we can sort of make decisions from there.
So my experience of public hearings is you can't quite give that level of direction to them, but having been on both sides of public hearings. So I think we have a plan. I think a week is certainly doable. So we'll send that out, we'll figure out a time, we'll get people together, and I do want to, you know, thank the public, especially, you know, just, you know, the, you know, everyone who's taken the time to think and write and, you know, think through this topic, and even, I think, the people in this room, I feel like, you know, perspectives are evolving. I think that's, I think there's not a lot of that in our society these days. It's one of our biggest problems. I often say, all conversations these days have sides but not a center, right? Everyone's got a side, but no one can meet in the center. And, you know, I think this is kind of just another example that I think we're not going to be at a loss for finding those opportunities here and across the country, quite frankly. So, so, so thank you, everyone, for your thoughts. I'm, you know, I want to propose to the board that we not talk about board committees right now, except, you know, I have heard from a variety of people around the special ed committee, and so I just wanted to share some, you know, some thoughts on that, and if the board has, you know, some thoughts they want to share. I think some of the other ones we can talk about at our, at our, yeah, our August 6th meeting, we'll talk a bit about, you know, some of the other committees, but, you know, I want to reiterate, and I think it was a thread through some of these comments today as well, you know, whether Nanish is appointed, or someone else is appointed, or someone else never gets appointed, and there's an election, or the special ed and the special ed audit. And I think, you know, as we've come to, I think, talk about it amongst special ed first and then us, is it's really a district-wide curriculum audit because it's not so much just what's happening in special ed that's the issue, it's the seams, it's the integration points. And so when we think about the work that needs to be done, no matter who gets appointed or how this happens, I really don't want to conflate those two issues because that is high, high, high on the priority list. When we sat down and interviewed Charlie and everyone else, we said, "We've got six things we want to help you work on: special ed and the special ed audit, and understanding what has advanced well and what hasn't advanced, and where do we need to do more work," was the number-one thing that we shared with every single candidate. We've got to figure out where are these things going well, why are they going well? How can we do more of that? Where are the sticking points? Why do they continue to be sticking points? How do we get them out of the way? I have an opinion that there is not a single board member who's going to come in and solve that. There is not a miracle worker. This is a lot of people across the district, most of whom are not sitting in this room, quite frankly. So I just wanted to reaffirm, everyone, that that committee's there, that committee is going to be chartered in a way to be supportive. One thing I wanted to throw out to the board is, you know, I think that there's an opportunity to, you know, meet with the heads of SEPTA to talk a little about what worked well with the committee last year and what could work better, and have an open dialogue so that, you know, the heads of SEPTA are part of that dialogue as well, so we can set up a body that can really help, you know, advance that work. So I wanted to put, I just want to put that out there because I think that's one of the reasons why people, you know, maybe want to show up and talk about committees, you know, you know, maybe the audit committee wasn't high on everyone's, you know, priority list here right now, although obviously very important function.
Always the most interesting.
So with that, I'll open it up for second public comment. Does anyone have any other comments? Please, Melissa.
Hi, it's Melissa Goldberg again. So Doug, you and I know each other well. Our five-year-olds are engaged to be married. So I say this with the utmost respect. There are a lot of people in this room that do not go home, have their dinner, go to sleep, and forget about the things that were discussed. I'm not one of them. I'm involved in SEPTA, but there are certain people in this room who, the amount of time that they put into children, all of our children, because as many people said, SEPTA and special ed is not just about kids who have IEPs and 504s, it's about all of our students in this district. And there are a lot of people in this room who have been immensely helpful to me and to my family, to all of the children in this district, who have put, you know, who are single parents, who are working parents, who spend hours and hours every week, who spend so much time with Tony, and with Laura, and with Tessa, and with everybody else to try and move things forward, and there was not a ton of progress, as other people have said. And I was so happy to hear what you just said about the fact that this audit and the special ed, that all of this is a top priority, that makes me feel great, and I'm sure it makes a lot of people in this room feel great, but I couldn't not comment on what you said, and I agree with what Lisa said. I stopped being a Girl Scout troop leader after a year because it was not for me. I couldn't do it, I didn't have the time, I didn't have the persona for it, and I think when you step up, and I appreciate all of the time and energy that you guys put into coming to all these meetings and all of the work that you do when you're not in this room, I know how much work it is, I am a public servant, I work for the city, I get it all, and I appreciate it, but, but be aware that what you said was like a dagger to the heart of a lot of the people in this room who spend their lives dedicated to the kids in this district.
Thank you, Melissa. I apologize, that was, I misspoke. I really, I really don't feel that. I apologize. Any other comments?
Yes. One more. Rob McQueen, I live in Hastings, and I know you don't mean that, Doug, because I know you, and we spent a lot of time talking about it. It did cause an audible gasp in the back of the room.
So it's got to be a few.
Similar message, but maybe from a different perspective. I never go home and forget about it because I live with it, and that's why you got the audible gasp. I think, yes, SEPTA members and the co-presidents and others are fighting for our kids all the time, but we fight for our individual kids every day. My 10-and-a-half-year-old is on my hip or my wife's hip. Every day. It does not change. Oops, sorry. It is Groundhog Day, and that's why we are so passionate, why we fight so hard, because it's Groundhog, nothing's going to change. My daughter has Down syndrome, for those who do not know. She'll always have Down syndrome. So what we do is to fight to give her what the last generation didn't get. It's that simple. We heard today, actually, from someone that 50 years ago, the life expectancy of a Down syndrome, a child with Down syndrome was 20 years. 20 years ago, the life expectancy was 40 years. Today, the life expectancy is 60 years. We need to prepare our child for that life. That's why we're here, that's why we're fighting. So just wanted to get that across. I will say this, though, and I know it's going to come across blasphemy, and I'm a former agent, player agent, athletics, I'm a sports marketer, that's what I went to school for, I have my degree in sports administration, I believe in sports. How did that decision get made so quickly on those assistant coaches when we've been working in a criminal environment for years to get decisions made? Please give all of it the same attention. And I know there's a lot of sausage-making we don't know about, but every constituency group is concerned with getting the attention. We should have had that entire group still here talking about the seventh board member, but they weren't here because they didn't even know it was going to get discussed because they had one agenda item in mind. That's why they came here, and then they left, and they missed a really important agenda item that they could have had public comment on, and they could have had a feeling on, and you could have gotten an outside perspective from the special ed community. We don't want to be white noise. We don't want to be the ones that always talk up and so we don't get listened to. We have a lot of fresh faces and new voices. We have a lot of people trying to get to the center. It's a really hard place to get to today, and we know that from our national discourse, but we're trying to get there. But we have to make sure it's as important as everything else in our community, and that's how we'll change the culture that will make it not important to have one board member specifically on the board to talk about something because we'll all be talking about it. Thanks. Good luck.
Hi, Michelle Vavoda, I live in Hastings. This is going to be really quick because I know it's after 10:00, but I just want to say, I'm from, for someone who's newly civically engaged with the Board of Ed, that, you know, at the big community meeting that everyone was, that so many people were at, I heard from the board a lot of comments about, like, you know, there are meetings where only five people are here, and if you want to be involved, come to the meetings, and there was this big shout-out to the community to come to the meetings. And then we have, we had standing room only in this room for a while, but then I was sitting there just, you know, moments ago and feeling like now that wasn't enough. Like, well, we're all here, but, you know, not to, and I know you apologized, and I don't mean to like call you on it again, but, you know, that, that, yeah, we're here, but then we go home and we forget about it, or, you know, we're here, but it's only, it's not enough of the community, it's only a certain special interest group of the community that's been writing letters this week, or that's been talking amongst themselves, and only those people are here. So I just think that the board needs to be open to this possibility that we woke up and, you know, we're here, and we'd like to be listened to and taken seriously as people who are concerned about, you know, the education of our kids, and the education of our friends' kids, and our community's kids, and that we're not just here, you know, for an hour every other week, but that we're also on the phone with our friends, and we're talking about things, and we're meeting with teachers and principals and stuff, because it is, it's, you know, the people are getting more engaged about this. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Jennifer Destin, 140 Fairmont Avenue. I have to, I mean, I'm going to steal Rob's expression of Groundhog Day, but use it for a different reason. I have to say I have that feeling. When I hear talk of, "We're going to sit down, we're going to understand what's working with special education, what's not working." We had an audit. The audit told us what's working and what's not working. We had a vote, and everyone voted to follow through on the recommendations of the audit. I don't think there's a mystery of what's working and what's not working, and we cannot spend any more time investigating that. We can investigate why it's not moving forward, we can investigate the pathways to do it, but I just think we should be really careful about how we talk about it because it's not like there's not a blueprint. We have a blueprint. And I also just want to say, and I'm not going to call you out, you know, but this is that. I don't, I don't say at home, "Yes, I think about my own daughter," but as co-president of a volunteer organization, and there are many volunteer organizations in this town that keep this community running, Little League, CYL, all of them, all of those people have jobs, they think about the kids, and they do what needs to be done. That's, that's the thing, right? I was shocked by how much work there was of being co-president of SEPTA. You dig your heels in, and you do it. I don't think this is a time for us to be having an us-versus-them conversation about who does more, who wants more, who cares more. I think this community has had that conversation for many years, and that's why we are where we are now. So I just, let's just move forward together without that sort of back and forth.
I'm sorry, I'm so tired. I also get really nervous in front of you, which is weird because I talk in front of people all the time. It's like the thing that I do. I just actually want to bring it back because it's turned a bit into a SEPTA conversation, which is a very important issue. Is this good? Because if I get too close, then I'd like those weird things.
Just say your name again into the-
Oh, Georgia Lopez, Hastings resident. Can you just tell me that list of priorities again that you had mentioned earlier?
I don't know that it was exhaustive, but I can-
Okay. Sorry to put you on the spot, in a different way than everybody else put you on the spot.
Continued progress in special ed audit, approach to strategic planning, curriculum instruction, professional development, facilities in bond, and budget in a tax cap world where we likely won't have the same growth factor this year as the last couple of years.
I just want to say that diversity is not on that list. I know it's not exhaustive, but when we're talking about filling the seat, and we're talking about special education, we should also be talking about the fact that we do have some opportunities here to think about how we can diversify this board. Our community is becoming more diverse. I would love to be able to think, to make sure that that is actually incorporated into what you're doing, and you know that I have worked very, very hard on inclusion in this village. It's one of the most important things to me, especially as a person of color. It's one of the most important things to me, especially as a person of color. I don't want us to lose sight of that, please, let's not lose sight of it, and if that means that we have to, you know, shift sometimes a little bit in a strange direction, I'm sorry. But ultimately, I think, you know, this is, this is a topic that it, inclusion is such a huge part of what was happening over the last year. It was really important, and people were getting very involved in many different ways. I don't want that to be lost in this conversation. And so we're not just looking for someone to fill a special ed seat, we're not looking for someone to, you know, change up the makeup of this board in that way, but I think when we do start looking for someone, however we do it, we need to think really broadly. We need to think about all the things that this board is missing, and there are more things than just a special education person. So please consider that in your next steps, and I look forward to the next steps. Thank you.
No? Okay. You know, I have a very specific opinion on one topic that came up, and I just find, I find that I want to share it right now. Jen, you brought up the idea of, we have a blueprint, and as someone who does organizational consulting for a living, I think one of the opportunities in the special ed audit is to take some paragraphs that are big amorphous things like "change the culture" and figure out what the heck that really means, and, and so I would, I would say that we have parts of a blueprint, but we don't really have the blueprint. And maybe that's what you meant while you said, "There's work to be done," right?
Can I just respond back to this?
Sure.
I think that we've had, yes, those one on this paragraph, but I feel like what this last year was about was defining some of them. I just don't want that work to be lost.
Right, yes.
The print sounds like you mean something whole hog, and I don't think that's very hard.
Right, right. Okay, I mean, I think we're like in the same ballpark, and we're driving, you know, kind of in the same direction. I think it's an important topic. Okay, so Board of Ed comments.
Yeah, so I just want to say that we live in a pretty amazing community, and I think this is, this evening is sort of a testament to that. I like to say, "Welcome, Charlie, you really got a taste of Hastings." But I'd also like to say, I'd like to say thanks to Lisa for the time that you've put in as the board president. You've worked tirelessly and passionately. You've been deeply committed to a lot of issues, to a lot of causes, appearance, and I appreciate the time that it took from your family, because I think we all know what that's like, we all have to do that at times, including people sitting in the audience. But I just want to thank you for, you put your heart and soul into being president of the board. And I want to thank Doug and Tim for stepping up to be president and vice president. Maybe after tonight, you're not so sure you wanted to do that, but I'm very happy that you stepped up even in the process of looking for an interim, and I think we did a great job. In fact, I think the board did a great job working together to, to hire Charlie, who I think is going to be wonderful for our district, but I just want to thank you both. You've already put in an enormous amount of time and effort, and even over a holiday week and holiday, vacation week, but I think that you're going to, it's clear that you're both very committed to it and willing to be open and listen, even if you have your own opinions, as evidenced by tonight, and I thank you. I think we're going to be well-served by both of you, and I think we all give you our support to work hard with you and to step up and not just leave it all to you. And also to Lauren and to Jeremy, I want to say welcome, and give you a lot of credit to coming to your first board meeting and being willing to speak up and take a position, because there's a part of me that would have felt like I'm just going to abstain on everything until I have a better sense of things. I think this is not an easy meeting, this is not what an organizational meeting has been like in my time on the board. It's like a half an hour, quick meeting and move on, and then you have a meeting at the end of the summer. This is very different. But I give you both a lot of credit. There's, you're going to have a lot of interesting learning that you're going to do while you're on the board. It'll be interesting to see where you are next year at this time, but I really give you credit for being able to sit here and comment on things, not just vote or hit the buzzer at a second motion, but to actually speak up. I think that takes a lot in your first board meeting, so I just want to say that I'm very hopeful about our ability to move forward this year, as difficult as a spring as this has been, and Lord knows, this has been a difficult spring for our district in many ways, and I think everybody here has brought things to the table that we have to keep in mind and be mindful of. And I will say, Georgia, diversity being right up there, that we can't let that be not part and parcel of everything else, and inclusion, but I'm actually pretty hopeful in having served on many variations of boards. I guess one was pretty same for a long time, but there were changes. I really feel like we have the ingredients to be able to find a way to work together again. That doesn't mean always agreeing, but it's about respecting each other and being able to come to consensus about things and where we have to move forward and do our work, and do our work at the high level that is intended, is intended for a board to steward the district in all the kinds of ways that we need to steward it. So thank you, everybody, and welcome, Charlie.
So I have some comments written down for Lisa as well. Thank you for your time over the last year. I mean, to me, it's kind of like, if there's anyone, if you ever want someone in your corner who's going to fight for you harder than anyone, it's Lisa Liffler. She is someone who can research an issue better than anyone, faster than anyone, in her perch at the Dobbs Diner daily from, I don't know what hour in the morning, until nine or 10, doing in-depth education research on so many different topics. And, you know, one thing we didn't get a chance to talk about, but a topic that you've been very passionate about is advocacy, and, you know, a proposal that we have that we still need to discuss as a board is setting up an advocacy committee, which we've never had before, as an opportunity to really have you drive and lead that work for the district, and, what's that? Oh, you have had one, okay, so not in the last few years. And, you know, I think that with your energy, you can attract a lot of different people in the district and bring a lot of different, I think, just a different angle, you know? I think it's, as you've been president, you've been busy, it's been kind of an ad hoc sort of thing, it's been in the back of your mind, but, and I think there's an opportunity to really bring some structure to that, so I look forward to your leadership, your continued leadership in that way. So thank you.
Thank you, it was a pleasure, and a pleasure working together as a team, and, yeah, I'm really excited about the advocacy work, especially with the other organizations, that will, it'll be a natural flow. Thank you.
Yeah, so that's, that's great. And, and thank you to the public, you know, I'm, you know, it's obviously my first board meeting, so I will put my foot in my mouth again, so count on that. You know, I can be pretty fiery at times and zen at others, and I never know which one's going to come out, but I think that's maybe what helps me be successful, I'm not sure. But, you know, what I can, I guess what I want to share is my commitment to the district and being the president is, I'm going to push for what I feel is right, and I'm going to do that with the input from a lot of people. And, and so it's not just my point of view, it's a lot of people's point of view, but I think where there's a variety of things which we need to make decisions on, and we've got to drive, and we've got to push it forward, and we've got to do that as a community together, and we've got to find ways. I think that's one of the things that's been broken in the community, is finding ways to have productive dialogue that doesn't devolve into just opinions that can't be processed. There's just too many opinions that can't be processed, but we've got to keep finding ways to open up dialogues. I feel it's extremely important in our community and in our society right now to be able to do that work, so I look forward to continuing to doing that work with this board and with you as a community member. So thank you all for showing up and sharing your opinions tonight, it's helpful.
I just want to add something to what you just said, that I agree with what you're saying, but I think we're also lucky to have Charlie as our new interim, and I think we're going to really, given where we are, benefit from having a seasoned superintendent who's been in Westchester County, I think probably with a number of issues, not unlike issues that we have, not everything the same, but I think as we move forward and try to tackle these, I think to have Charlie as a resource is going to be really to our, really greatly to our advantage.
Okay, with that, meeting adjourned.
Thank you, everybody.